Okay guys, we're just waiting. Thanks for joining us, we're just waiting for the meeting to start. Chedai Brown is here. He is a few feet from me. He knows he has a no contact order. Excuse me. So, you know, hopefully he doesn't create any trouble, I'm so sorry. My throat. Hey guys, sorry. Keep an eye, oh, thank you, Chedai is... I, hello status quo. Miss Unique. Then crew, hey guys. Yeah, sorry if I can't necessarily see all of you, but... I don't know what the holdup is for, usually we start on time, so I don't know. To give you an idea, just a little sweep of the room again. So yeah, pretty good attendance tonight. Look, we even have, there's like a back row there too. Can't quite see all those people, but it's pretty good. We have the usual police, let's see, how many did I count? Usually we'll do a police count. Count one. And then the police chief, two, so there's that guy in the corner. Yeah, I see him back there, barely. There's a little three. Another one by the door, four. Another one doing security, five. Another one behind me, that is... That's six. I don't know who this guy is here, seven. Then we have, um... Oh, there was another one. In the rear, but yeah, so let's say at least seven that we can count. Seven, fully armed, oh, there's another one that popped up at the door. So it's at least eight fully armed officers for a public meeting. I just always think it's so excessive, you know? Oh, there's another one, yeah, see, I knew there was somebody. There's another one talking to the ladies in the back row there. So what did that mean, that's ten now? Ten fully armed officers, just that I can see from here. He's a straight shooter. Case, um, he's status eight sixty-one-two. Is the news there, which station, yes? Um, I'm not sure where, that I can ask? Are you guys...
This is the City of Harvey, Illinois Council Meeting. It is Monday, October two thousand twenty-five, seven, one. With all of the present, all persons, council members, and partners, as said. Next side over here is the indication of the plan of the region. If you want to be so tight. Now here's the prayer. From the place. Mr. Father, the Father. We come to thee, Lord, as long as we know our Lord. Come to thee, Lord, with our cups half full. We know thee, Lord, and we bow. We won't wait to give us abundance of the grace and mercy and blessings of the flesh and blood. But if we give thanks to Jesus for what he has suffered and won, and allowing us to cope together in our struggle, in the right, family, man, we thank you for our family, Lord, and we thank you for our physical blessings, and we thank you for our financial blessings. But if we cannot thank you enough, you serve the people, and we see, see the face, you are, you are my man. I do six thirty-three stairs. I will do all things in the Christ Jesus' strength as long as we believe in our heart. You are your flock, you are our shepherd. Lord, you bless us with your worship, you bless us with your guidance, so we can use the gifts of abundance for the Jesus blessings throughout this entire city. We want you to bless the City of Harvey, Lord. We have a first rule, but everybody has a first rule. Lord, we know that we can do all things in the Christ Jesus' strength. But if we ask him, this is our prayer, we ask him all, and Jesus say.
To the public, which stands: One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I apologize guys, I hope you're able to hear, you know, they, Clark illegally makes us stay in the back, which is stupid.
That's from there, it's all manual force. We will start with... We'll start with the six word.
Thank you all. Good evening, everybody. Glad you all could make it out. It's so nice to see you so many, so much participation here in our city council meetings. My report this evening has been very short, very brief. I would like to pay condolences to one of the residents of Gray City's ward that recently resigned from the city. Name is Talisha James. She just passed away, so I heartfelt condolences go out to the Johnson family. My mother, Virginia Johnson, she's a great supporter, and they're great people and a great family. So, uh, let me keep that family in prayer, and that ends my report, thank you.
Next, uh, you have the second word.
Good evening, everyone. Before I speak on the city's finances, I want to extend my condolences to the Maxi family. Also, I want to urge the public to remain vigilant. America Marshall, a sixteen-year-old student, was last seen leave the Thornton High School on Thursday, July tenth, twenty twenty-five. Confer to if she had on the Harvey Police Department's Facebook page. Please share it today later to help bring her home safely. I want to address a couple of things regarding the finances. Beginning with the financial dismanagement in Harvey. Since June twenty twenty-four, I've sent ten emails to the mayor and council and controller with no response, even my own reimbursement approved on June tenth, twenty twenty-four, without my vote came with documents. Worse, this fifty thousand dollars was allocated to the second ward residence in the budget and is still being withheld. That's not a delay, that's a disservice. Audit failure costing taxpayers. On September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, the Illinois Controller issued a fourth audit notice after Harvey failed to submit required financial reports for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. By November first of twenty twenty-four, the city's compliance demand was rejected for lacking even a CPA engagement letter. Now, it would be a hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars worth of big one in order because of this administration neglect. Unhappy deals and shutdowns. By June fourth, twenty twenty-five, Harvey paid shutdowns of the software management systems to the amount of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents in unpaid invoices, outstanding dues from May twenty-third. And July twenty-third, remained unreconciled with no complete explanation. Unexplained building and inspectional costs. According to the May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five bill list, the city paid sixty-three thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents to P and S Construction Co. for inspectional services. Yet, there's some work now, no detail on what was done, where, or for whom. That's my calling for the Economic Development Committee to check out all the wonderful money spent to me, not just to hear reports, to demand answers. Fireworks, it's a matter of relief. In July of twenty twenty-four, Harvey spent about thirty-two thousand six hundred and forty dollars on fireworks. At one night show, Harvey's population is just under twenty thousand. That money could have been provided with two thousand households to offer the eighty-six point two percent property tax increase. A thousand dollars to her person, from her family. Instead of residents like Ms. Dorothy, a fifty-year homeowner, brought back from her home for retention time, received nothing. The fireworks paid in one night, but the big more steel burns today. And to record, for the record, one fifty-three fourteen, that squabber currently resigning. I have more to say, but thank you, City of Harvey, for your support. It's just minutes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, you have the third word.
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted, I'm going to be sure as well, just want to thank the city staff for doing such a good job. I know, um, you look, you do this hard with the resources that we have, the limited resources we have, but you still come to show up with your head on, regular, put your boots on, around the streets. You guys have been running really well. I know we got a little holdback, and I see that some of the blocks have gotten cut, it's probably getting cut again, which we appreciate that as well. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you, next is the fourth word.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everybody's staying cool, appreciate everybody for coming out tonight. Um, my report is somewhat, um, briefly, um... When it comes to ward expenses, if residents are not aware, all of us are supposed to believe the advocate to receive up to twenty-five thousand dollars a year for beautification in your ward. They don't necessarily guarantee you get all the money, but they should be able to get some. I've been on them for seven years. Um, seven years, you add that up, that adds up to about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for my ward. And out of that amount, I think I believe I received fifteen or twenty before you information. So, with a hundred and fifty thousand for beautification, where does the money go? They say it goes to the general form, but nobody know how to spend it. If you don't have my money for my ward and not give it to me, I should even want to be able to decide where I want it to be spent. That's at least just being fair. I've been trying to meet with the mayor for about four months now. Um, for whatever reason, we just can't schedule a date for if I can get a date or get a real product, just to sit down and meet with the man. You know, great, great, manifest this, make things better, for sure, don't try to communicate, that's all we're trying to do. Um, my public safety meeting is on chair of the Public Safety Committee. I'm pretty sure residents are concerned about the city, the safety of the city, the improvements of the city, the suggestions for the city. But for whatever reason, May, I didn't get my schedule meeting, June, I didn't get my schedule meeting. July, I have my schedule for June first, hopefully I can have that, but I haven't received anything back yet. Um, like I said, most when it comes to the ward expenses, um, you only receive a certain amount at one time in increments, but twenty-five thousand dollars is not, not a lot of money to do when it comes to streets or tearing down houses. But beautifying the area, you know, we have a gateway set on one hundred and forty-seventh and Dixie Highway that's been off for, um, about ten years now. You know, just to beautification, put some flags up, get some garbage cans, um, the posters that say, "Help Clean Up Harvey", you know, helping cities or so now, um, having back to school events, things like that, was out of my privilege, you know? So with that being said, I wish that we could, um, somehow work this thing on out. I'm still a team player, doesn't matter the situation, I am on this team, we are all on this team. And I was brought up that way, I was coached that way. You don't have to like a person, but you still have to put your hand in that person. I'm saying just passing the ball, because I want to shoot too, thank you.
Next, the first word.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm going to be a little brief, okay? Because I do work this with the county's council. The expense account was changed to the actual, so it's not going to help.
So you should do it, um, like how?
I'm sorry, the beautification account has been allocated back to the street department. You remember when I first was elected, we had extra money to cut grass. Now, that, that has been put back into the street department. So our expense accounts are twenty-five thousand dollars. There are certain guidelines through which you can use your expense account. Uh, within those guidelines, it's all written out in the municipality bulletin, chapter sixty-five. Once you fill that out, like I do, and my, my, um, I do have like a three to one on it, but but what happens is that I pay everything out of pocket first, and so then it can be seen. So with that being said, everything he hasn't received, he have already paid for. I believe each algorithm at the beginning of the term receive four thousand dollars. And once that money is used up, then you can get, um, you can get reimbursed for that. Uh, but then, then is my understanding of their respect. Second of all, I would like to mention, is I read this on, on the internet, and I thought it was really interesting. You take a group of cats, you have red cats, and you have black cats. And you put them together in a jar, and they will go nowhere, they will get them on. But suddenly, they will come around and shake up that jar, and they start attacking one another. So the moral of what I'm trying to say is, before we react, let's get all our cats, like, let's be careful on who's shaking up our jar, so we can have so much anger and hostility. I mean, I, I, I'm telling you, that this really has to stop with the lies. And I'm not saying anyone at this council can hear it's like, because everyone has their own group and, and, and believe in what, in what they're saying. But I, I, I'm seeing a lot more out there, and I'm just flattered, yes? Somebody asked for my resignation, let me tell you something, I did the note, I swear to God. So as long as I'm sitting in this seat, as long as I am not resigning, under no circumstances. With that, I want to say, thank you very much, and you have a blessed day.
Thank you. Next, you have the public comment. Public comments encourage and appreciate this for the only opportunities that the public would invest to see council. On agenda items standing in... On agenda items standing in Congress to be during business. In order to accomplish our business on the agenda and to respect all of everyone's time, council members will not engage in dialogue with individual members of the audience and no comedic action when we take any comment in the public comments issue. When your name is talked, cease to complain. State your name, um, please, when your comments are permitted. Most of the remarks on this is over time from the speaker. Comments shall be heard, with respect at all times. No person may be faulted by comments or persons. Kevin Hamer Kaiser, this is on the press financial time. The council panel engaged in conversation with the public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed with the city staff who are ready for business hours. Um, and before we get started, I just want to say that we understand that everyone has, everyone has an opinion of the way things are supposed to be or things should go. Just because someone gets up and makes a comment, uh, logically issued, doesn't mean, not mean that comment is fact. It just means that it is an opinion of the person who is giving it, so please, don't yourself according to it. Now, first, first on public comment is Lee Green, followed by Ryan Simons. Testing one, two. Good morning, Mr. Clark. Everyone else? Got a, a couple of concerns in reference to, you know, the wrong situation that I've been here and I've discussed quite a few times. And it started about four weeks ago, when you met and you established an on-one relationship with a community member as a cop guy. Immediately, you opened up privileged information, these were not allegations, these are, this is from his testimony, with information on said individual with confidential data. But prepared a full week for individual or individuals, because it wasn't just one person, it was a group of people, harassed directly with violence, and he even physically assaulted a business owner with violence. That business owner was hospitalized. Yes, that business owner was hospitalized. Mob action and guns were included in this action. The police stood down while the business owner was visiting, including Officer McAdams, on several occasions. Tens of thousands of dollars of inventory was stolen from the said business owner. I want to play a witness statement from the individual. One of the individuals involved in this mob action, and, uh, we have several, including the business owner's people, the business owner's employees, who have actually sat out in the back with including their attorney, and we are working on what happens next. So, I just want the community to listen to this. And this is one, one video from, in particular, assault and mob action. This is witness testimony. So, when we were doing the survey, the son showed up, called the police. The police had no authority in anything, because no crime was committed. When the police left, the son tried to, when they shot our kid, flatten her tire. When he's trying to flatten tires on her vehicle, then one of the generals, maybe, ran up there and said, "Hey, that one ain't doing it." The son tried to shout out, "A person that was standing on the plaza", and tried to, "What you think happened?" And on the night, for everybody, "Come", he did that to himself. I'm going to start right there, because there was another piece about the several videos and witnesses statements that we have, but this is one that's involving a twenty thousand dollar payout that allegedly you took, Mr. Clark, from this individual, and, um, I want you to hear this. Thank you very much. I will share the information too, the word of township citizens action committee for this one. I'll be the media outside. Next, this is Ryan Simons, followed by Shapira Hoss.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ryan, I'm from the Hardest Oral Society, and I'm in the Harvey. Uh, I did, I wanted to, I'm glad that Southwood Alderman brought up the expense accounts. Uh, it's, it's concerning, and it, it goes along with the pattern that we have, uh, seen, that I've been speaking against for several years now, as far as the accountability for our tax dollars. Um, we, um, at the Harvey's Oral Society, we recently threw FOIAs, because the city will not give us any information about our finances. We were able to obtain some of the expense receipts for Alderman and Drinsky, and we did share some of those. Some of them, for about eight years, probably included, um, around a thousand dollars for turkeys, five hundred dollars for calendars, a thousand dollars for a DJ, and nine hundred dollars for a ward phone bill. This is if you were going to, if you go online and look more. But my question is, um, and not that it's bad to use, uh, the, the ward expense funds on things, but we can't get potholes fixed, we can't get streetlights on, we cannot let stray dogs and animals pick up that are, that are attacking people, but surely, it's also part of the, in the first ward. So, then, my question is, why does my Alderman not get reimbursed? Why has she not been reimbursed for years for her expenses? I mean, obviously, this seems like a way that Mayor Clark is trying to buy Alderman's votes and to withhold funds if people don't vote how he wants to, so I don't know, I mean, I don't think that that's acceptable. Um, also, it begs the question, like, which is it, Mayor Clark and the four aldermen? Is Harvey broke because she mismanaged it for some years, or do we have money? But for whatever you want to pay for. I think that's, I think it's really the second thing, because I noticed whether your twenty-four-hour security that you have, Mayor, for the house that you were told you don't even stay at, there's always those three police cars there, the camera. I mean, but then, and like I said, Harvey's in the first ward, that's great, if the city didn't look like it was falling apart. But then surely, it's all her, her, um, you know, expenses paid for her ward, or our waters of us. Um, also, I wanted to mention that, um, echoing the waste of the tens of thousands of dollars for the Fourth of July, um, while that is going on, the mayor is sending the police to bully, harass, and arrest, and tame people, who are just asking, "Where's the money?", like, um, Melissa Crumey, uh, a neighbor of mine, who was arrested and, um, injected angles against her will. So, I, I just want to know why Mayor Clark has been using our police to protect certain actors, individuals going around the city that are trespassing on private property, they're doxing people, they're, they, um, one of them came to my home during the Fourth of July parade and actually attacked me at my home. So, why are you doing this? And if you have something to say, Mayor Clark, just say it. Don't use our police to protect these, these bad actors. Thank you.
Next, we have Shapira Hoss, followed by Shapira Brander.
Hello, y'all. I'm Shapira Hoss. Um, and twenty twenty-three, I would like to do the Harvard Public Library Board. Thank you for all the work from you. Um, so, we have a lot of, uh, things in Harvey that's going on at the same time. Um, just a couple of days ago, I'm pretty sure, if you guys follow me on Facebook, I went live on one hundred fifty-third and Merdle, which that is supposed to be the area of the retention pod. Um, there was a lady in Miss Dorothy's, um, old house, her and her significant other, they're there. And by their admission, they've been there for two months already. And they're just, uh, they said that they had permission to be there. I'm trying to figure out if you guys wanted these people to be out so bad, why are you allowing squatters to come in and stay? I mean, you know, Harvey has had corruption in the past, plenty of corruption. And I'm trying to figure, is it because if they stay long enough, you know, they'll be able to get an ID and they'll be able to vote? I'm trying to figure, that's the reason they're there? Because it's not just that one house, it's a couple of people that's squatting on one hundred fifty-third and Merdle. And then, uh, tow up one hundred fifty-four for a year, and the streets are starting to sing. What did you do? I mean, that was what, how many millions of dollars y'all wasted, and the streets are starting to sing? Um, y'all got, uh, movies coming, people doing movies in Harvey? Why would you want to do that? That's embarrassing. Look how it look. And y'all want to put that on a big screen for the millions of people to see? That's crazy. Y'all looking to embarrass us? Is, is that the goal, to embarrass Harvey, to make us look like we just rap because basically, that's all they gonna see? I mean, then, where's this money going? Where is the money going? I'm pretty sure y'all don't have police patrolling, and that's going to have to cost the taxpayers. Y'all have all this stuff going on, but ain't nobody patrolling over there on one hundred fifty-third and Merdle, keep them, them squatters out of there? But, what, one hundred fifty-seventh Page, always got a police officer sitting over there? And y'all supposed to be demolishing these homes? What if y'all demolished a home and somebody in there, a whole family in there? What y'all going to do then? Like, the people that boarded us over there on Hawk Street? I mean, make it make sense. Y'all need to, you know, uh, figure out what y'all going to do, and let us know where this money going?
Thank you. Next, we have Sharif Brander, followed by Rui Nanyu.
Well, if it wants to everything, I want to say. Well, I was born and raised in this city. I want to see my city great again. That's pretty much what I want to say. Um, uh, we need to see a difference. That's, that's pretty much all I want to say. I want to see it better. We need to make it better. The money better, the streets better, the houses better, everything needs to be better. I, uh, today, I seen the, the two young men, they came in talking about, uh, moving, uh, they thought they were doing a movie, uh, out here. And I'm asking, okay, you want to do, y'all doing a movie out here, how is this going to benefit our city? And they, they didn't answer me. So, my thing is, these people, this is second or third time somebody came out here doing movies, and, uh, I'm not seeing a difference. We still have abandoned buildings, um, but no businesses coming in, no making a difference. So, I'm trying to see what we're going to do about that. Uh, I want to see a difference. All is ours and different than all is us, that I want to see a difference. I don't see no difference in the last six years, I need to see a difference. That's all I want. That's all I got to say, that's it, everything I want to say. I just want to see a difference.
All right, next is, uh, Rui Nanyu, followed by Shapira Harris.
Uh, what I'm about to say, I had to talk about it a little bit over two and three months ago. One of the significant things that we need in ad administration, of course, we need to move forward. We need to stop thinking about what is not going on, but look at what things that are going on and possibly playing. We cannot do it alone. We have to do it together. And no matter what we say, or whatever we try to put together, we're not going to get any help from the outside. It was quite significant when this [inaudible] involved. Six years. Okay, what happened? Nothing. But I did want to mention one thing particularly, and this is going to be directed by the concerned citizens of Harvey in reference to the finances. Yes, add to the treasury. The treasurer has never made a report in over six years. I did not want to say anything about the treasury while that particular person was not present. But I will elaborate on much of the things that have gone on that are negative. There's a lot of positive things going on. Just open your eyes. Go up down one hundred forty-seventh street, go up and down James Sibley, go up on, uh, Dixie Highway. We have some things that are coming in near me. Take advantage of it. I'm going to be very quickly because of the time limit. Concerned citizens of Harvey are requesting that the treasury position be immediately eliminated, including with a cessation of sound. A financial report has not been admitted to the Harvey City Clerk since August twenty 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 four. A public omission statement by the current treasurer, who is an elected official and is verified public accountant, has never been made. We are still waiting. The person has used brilliant abuse over two hundred and forty thousand plus monies, and also in dollars that have been reelected for the same position that gave him a K. A second time, Harvey needs the money, payments without production.
Thank you very much. Next, uh, we have Shapira Harris, followed by Jerelyn Harris.
Uh, good evening, the city council and the mayor. Um, I've heard a lot of, uh, negative things about the city party. Um, I haven't seen one person come in and say something positive. Um, which you won't believe if you don't like it, yeah. I'm just saying. I've seen one hotter thing from residents. And I've been being a taxpayer in Harvey for over twenty years. And I'm trying to figure out why hasn't so much attack on this administration when before that administration, it was just a singing for hours? Didn't nobody really complain about coming every which way in Harvey, and it looks like crap? It looked like crap with catalog, I said. Now, all of a sudden, it's like, oh man, I don't like this rumor. But, but I will say this. The police department, back in two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, had thirty-six homicides. This year alone, they have thirty, and twelve were closed. Let me say that again, it's going to be one of that. It's only three homicides, or actually, three shootings, I guess, or homicides, if you want to put it. And, and two of those are closed. Like, I want to take my hat off to the chief of police here and, and the police department that's doing such a great job with that. Crime is actually down in the city of Harvey. And if you don't say nothing about nothing, that's something to say something about. You can shake your neck, you can shake your head, facts are facts. All you have to do is look at the facts. We can find problems with anybody, anything. I'm going to do one more. I found out maybe last week that there was a resident who house caught on fire next door to somebody else. And as much as we talk about giving back to residents and doing that, also want to commend and take my hat off to Mayor for helping this lady out when people roared against her. When this lady in her own ward, her older woman, didn't even help her. So, let that be known. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jerelyn Harris, followed by Jerelyn Harris.
This is Red One, uh, Sister Red One. My name is Jerelyn Harris. I have lived at one fifty-three thirteen South Act over fifty years. I was elected official of Harvey Public Library for six years. I served them six years to invest in my knowledge as a servant of this people's. Now, I'm famous, I want to first say thank you to the honorable Mayor Kehlau. Now, I'm famous, I want to first say thank you to the honorable Mayor Kalaup, to the honorable [inaudible]. I don't know if I can write, because the last time, not just the last one, but that's an expression for not wanting to talk. So, sometime when I'm in this place, I wanted to talk, but I was very made of twenty nineteen when he had to leave. Because he did nothing for my city but law. But I want to thank this council for all that you continue to do. This, I know this is the only job learning for each and every one of you all. And you are doing a great job. Thank you for that wonderful parade that you used to fund for to make this city a happy day, a happy day overall. For the fourth of July, even though we had [inaudible] out there, it was just this opportunity, the blood of Jesus over that construction, and others that were given in the blood of Jesus. Uh, my honor, I wish you would get with the strength of sanitation and clean up the alley from the debris and the torn up roads adjacent to fine and fashion in one hundred fifty-third street block. We got tall trees, everything, over seven feet tall in back of my home. Please let's get that done. Everybody's talking about, you know, every city, every administration has to report to Susan Mandola, who is the secretary, who is the charter of the bunnies here in the state of Illinois. You need to read, people you got to read. Go to the Journal General Freedom of Information and Open Media Act and finding out the rules of regulations. Read! Because no one is saying nothing about the library. Nobody. And you paying half the taxes. But we need that resources, even though it's in shadows. We need, we need the people here to come in and sit down and get cool and get warm in winter. I want to thank you very much, neighbors, for listening to me, because I am interested in listening.
Thank you very much. Next we have Jerelyn Harris.
My name is Jerelyn Harris. I want to be clear about to introduce myself and control my own narrative. I went to Thornton Township High School in two thousand five, and I come back to Harvey I do not recognize. My intention is to not bring on the rest, but to help resolve the issue that the lady wants beautiful and thriving south suburbs of Earth. And I don't intend to bring in non-proper here, we're looking to bring pro-proper this year, because the taxpayers needs to be viewed to recover. I'm very clear with you there. It wasn't outsiders who did it, it was his own people, his own. I listen to the commentary, commentary, and what I'll tell you is, this complaint has never solved anything. That's why when I leave here, I'm going to go to that library there, so I think I want to call the police. Because I pay attention. I do research. Within thirty days, you are not entrenched, you should be removed, and the police should move you. If the police show up, it's not because they're showing favoritism, it's because they're doing their job. And when citizens stop asking for money and begging other people and spatten up, they see the result. Yes, Mr. Hassan kept putting out narratives with Harvey. Everybody claimed a role. Do you know that he cost you over three million dollars in legal fees because he continues to sue your city? Do you know that he has a sanctuary where there are illegal immigrants in deplorable living conditions? Do you know that Hassan has made countless promises to do right by the city? From their dogs, to their humans, to bad business practices, he has taken your land and not complied with your government. So, only a fool would get up here and say, let's say Hassan with Harvey is in there. Just so that I can help you out. If a movie come here, that's awareness. When people find out about you, they care about you, they visit you, because it ain't just citizens that take the help of taxes, it's all the visitors that help the taxes. When they want to come in, spend money, and see what you got, maybe if they know how bad it is, they'll help you out. Because it is the call from one American to another, no matter where you geographically live, we got the United States of America. And when we show up for one another, things happen, change happens. And I'm just gonna talk about my truth. I've been called every name in the book except for who I am. Have you all saw what happened to the dog? Y'all didn't want me to come here to find the truth? You wanted me to come here to be in the sass. You wanted me to come here and be obedient, and I ain't that guy. So, let's be clear with you. I want to address one person with fifteen seconds. You invited the [inaudible] and you doubled down on it. What you have inside you, why you don't do ten minutes? Have attacked me, put out false narratives, have harassed me, and the [inaudible] too, because I got receipts.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Give everyone, for your comments, we greatly appreciate y'all. Uh, next we have our department. That's what we want. Start with our departmental report, led by the city administrator, Davis, uh, that will follow me in the next segment.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and residents. We've passed approximately a halfway mark this year, and I'm proud to say Harvey is moving forward. We are making meaningful, measurable, and worth of progress in building a better Harvey. Our work over the past year has been centered on infrastructure. We are prioritizing revitalization in our city and restoring pride in the neighborhoods that show it. Let's start with one of the most urgent priorities, safety and infrastructure. Streetlights in Harvey are no longer a promise, they are reality. If you don't remember, Hawsted was not lit on one hundred fifty-ninth, one hundred forty-seventh Broadway. All have received much needed lighting and safety, uh, for visibility. We're not done yet. One hundred forty-seventh street is next. We're actively working through the, uh, grant details, um, to get critical projects completed, um, as soon as possible. We've partnered with ComEd, so we're repairing residential streetlights across the city. Once all existing lights are on, we will assess the additional lighting needs where poles have never existed. We've also taken firm action in long light, uh, uh, for long lighting and dangerous projects. Through the combination of grants and strategic programs, we've demolished more than a dozen deteriorated buildings, including key structural sites. I want to only mention a few on Broadway Center, Lake Brook, and Hawsted, but they're good, they're good much more. Um, so because, you know, a lot of people like receipts, I'll fill out a couple. One three three West Hundred Fifty-first Place, two oh eight West Hundred Fifty-fourth Place, one hundred seventy-six West Hundred Fifty-fourth Place, one six four Old Fort Emerald, one five eight oh three Lake Brook, one five seven four six Park. Five, one two seven Wood, one four nine three three Vale, one, uh, four eight thirty Wood, one four eight two five Otterie, one four eight zero nine Clive. And the list goes on and on, uh, the amount of, uh, properties that have actually been demolished over the time that we've been in Harvey. The demolition also is not over. A lot of abandoned properties that are in the city, the city does not own, but we still look to work with the county on a new program to bring back, um, the demolition homes. One of our meaningful demolitions was the home next to Miss Honor West, who was displaced after a devastating fire. Thank you to Mayor Clark for helping her get back into her home. We've seen real momentum in economic development, so will aid the businesses have opened their doors. So, we would like to say welcome to Sheri Industrial, Living Time Cafe, Local One, Microcell Daycare, Iron Auto Glass, sorry, the Inports, the Garage, and the Luck Station. We also look forward to opening new air cameras this weekend. The groundbreaking recently and expected to open by September. This project represents not only major economic investment, but also a new era of opportunity for the city. This year marked the grand opening, we had the grand opening of Harvey Labs, expanded housing opportunities, and revitalized downtown LA. In addition, we have approximately fifteen investors actively exploring opportunities and Harvey to prove that the confidence is growing in our city. Our partnerships are strengthening as well. We have hired some power watchers that opened full investment right today, um, and many more investments throughout the city. On a public safety front, we've made significant progress. We've welcomed multiple officers, uh, welcoming people into our, uh, police firefighting party with the expanded team, and well-deserved promotions for both partners. Most notably, we accepted a brand-new two million dollar engine. This is our first engine that we've received, I want to say another twenty years. We've also made major strides in infrastructure this year. We've paved one hundred forty-seventh, which has never been paved in the last ten years, twenty years. Dixie Highway, Hawsted, one hundred fifty-ninth East End, or near Bentens. Um, we've paved Fairfield, Wichita, and Lake Brook. We're now only focused on large projects, but we're also meeting individual needs, like the installment of the water line in Miss Betty Allen's. Perhaps the most historic achievement this year is we passed a comprehensive plan. The city of Harvey, for the first time in over a decade, we have a bold and unified vision in guiding our growth, development, and future. Thank you.
Next we have the police department.
Mayor, councilmembers and residents. I'd like to provide an update on the recent crime statistics and cases handled by Harvey Police Department during the month of June two thousand twenty-five. This report also encompasses the department's overall activities in the past month. In June two thousand twenty-five, Harvey Police Department responded, the Harvey Police Department's patrol unit responded to a total of two thousand three hundred and twenty-four causal serves, and patrol a total of twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety miles. Their result, their efforts resulted in fifty-five misdemeanor arrests, ten felony arrests, one hundred and thirty-one moving and equipment violations citations, sixty-two vehicles towed, and fifty-one reported accidents. I would also like to note that on the Fourth of July, uh, our office recovered, um, narcotics and, uh, rifl, um, during that Fourth of July weekend. Uh, it was something that was, uh, that happened with a traffic arrest. And just want to give kudos to the Police Department. Here's a photo of the rifle that was supposed to hand gun narcotics that were recovered that day. I'm also pleased to report through the efforts of Harvey Police Department's Investigation Division, felony charge for five significant criminal investigation, some of you may have already heard of. The shooting of eleven-year-old Willow James in one hundred fifty-eight block of Klein Avenue. On May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, eleven-year-old Willow James struck in the head by a straight bullet while riding home from the school, from, while riding home from school in a vehicle with her father and her cousin. Willow was hospitalized and transferred to a rehab facility in City Chaw. I'm pleased to announce that she's moving better and on the road to recovery. Please keep on advancing first. Following an in-depth investigation, the Harvey Investigation Division identified Rayland T. Waters, a twenty-nine-year-old male born July thirtieth of nineteen ninety-five from the city of Harvey, as he defendant. Mr. Waters was taken into custody, and the firearm believed to have been used in the shooting was recovered in a circular vehicle. On July first, Mr. Waters was indicted on the following offenses: attempted murder, aggravated unlawful use of a firearm, and aggravated battle with the firearms, class X felony, in City of Illinois. Lastly, I would like to highlight a special operation that was conducted by the Harvey Police Department in conjunction with T.A.S., which is a, a group that we utilize within the city and we partner with, which is treating alternatives to safe communities. Uh, they're known as T.A.S., they're an organization, um, that our agency partner with over the last few years, that provides case management and advocacy services for individuals facing mental health and substance issues. Their mission includes offering alternatives to incarceration and supporting entrance to the community for various populations, including commercial sex workers and those with complex disabilities. On July second, two thousand twenty-five, the Police Department, uh, conducted an operation called Operation Springtime Safe Travel. During this operation, Springtime Safe Travel is an ongoing initiative focused on addressing concerns related to human trafficking and commercialized sex trafficking, which is prostitution throughout the city. This operation creates, aims to create a safer environment for everyone by allowing the Police Department to collect critical information and allocate appropriate resources to areas of need. This initiative encompasses various efforts, including issuing traffic citations, making criminal arrests, identifying drug activities, and raising community awareness. While this operation, however, this, the success of this operation depends greatly on the support and involvement of our community members. We urge you to, if you see something, say something. Operation Springtime Safe Travel is more than just a long course of effort. It is a collaborative, it's a collaborative partnership between community, law enforcement, and local service organizations. Your participation is essential and will make a significant difference in enhancing the safety and well-being of our community. During this operation, if you could see probably on the screen, uh, this department operation that was conducted, we accomplished the following: nine arrests for solicitation of prostitution, three vehicles towed, and three commercial sex workers who referred to treatment and services through T.A.S., which is treating alternatives for a safer community. Throughout the month of June, fifteen harmless bags were disseminated in the citywide. Three individuals in the area of one hundred forty-sixth, uh, and Hawsted's Business Corridor were referred to treatment and surgery. One individual on one hundred fifty-ninth Hawsted is now re-engaged back into the treatment courtroom. Three individuals took harmless bag, but did not have any problems. And T.A.S. is also set to lead our Police Department, we have a member here, if you don't mind standing up, uh, from T.A.S. I do want to mention that in the harmless bags are disseminated throughout our city. Uh, we have Narcan, water, a small snack, a ten-dollar gift card, soap, and face mats. Some are being placed inside the city hall with our auxiliary also material, if someone noticed one of them. The Harvey Police Department remains steadfast in its dedication to enhancing the safety and quality of life for our residents. We are valued for continued support as we move the city forward. Should you have any questions, require further information, please do not hesitate to contact Harvey Police Department or take a look at Harvey Police Department's Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is Fire Department. Followed by the worst.
Greetings, everyone. Uh, it's my pleasure to, uh, present the Harvey Fire Department activities for the month of June twenty twenty-five. I'm glad for our hard to competition that we just had. Uh, we had a response of a total of one hundred and fifty-three calls, sixteen fire-related calls, which include brush fires, building fires, stove fires, and vehicle fires. Forty-two EMS calls, which included both vehicle injuries. Twenty-two good intent calls, uh, those will include cancel dispatch, uh, no incident foul, or smoke or fuel calls. Which also included eighteen hazardous conditions, gas leaks, electrical wiring, and power gaps. Forty-five false alarm, uh, included, uh, on my shift and activities. Nine service calls, public assistance, lockdown, and several injuries itself. Uh, and finally, uh, I would like to announce that, uh, our Fire Department is, uh, initiating the smart nine-one-one. Uh, this is a system whereby residents, uh, will be notified, and can be notified in case of emergency, um, being in that. Uh, our captains and, uh, other members of the partners are working on the QR code. And if you step outside the code, when you step outside the code, you see flyers. We have been posted also in libraries, uh, we have reached out to some citizens, and our goal is to reach as many people as possible. And our goal is to reach as many people as possible, uh, so that they don't want to be signed up for this app. If you have any questions, concern, or you think that the Fire Department can do that.
Thank you. Next is public works followed by economic development.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say to people all, Mr. Provide, we're coming to be on several key initiatives and ongoing efforts with the government's hope of fast release. First, I want to recognize the hard work and preparation that went into this year's quarter-to-july celebration. Our team worked diligently to ensure the city with its best, having grass, tree trees, and new pine parade route in its surrounding areas. Their dedication helped create a festive and welcoming environment for everyone to enjoy. Moving on to more of five, I'm pleased to report that common repairs are now underway. So far, we've used eighteen zones and cold pack material to improve road safety and driving conditions. We thank the residents for their patience and cooperation as this important work continues. In our grounds of maintenance division, the team has been focused on keeping our neighborhoods, our neighborhoods clean and well-maintained. Over the past few weeks alone, they've moved and entered over one-hundred-and-nine-seventy-eight properties and lots, as in ever, that directly enhances the appearance and safety of our community spaces. We're also investing in our team development. Six employees have officially begun training for their commercial pesticide licenses. These career licenses will enhance our ability to maintain public safety, spaces, and public safety event. Turning to our facilities maintenance division, our team has boarded up six properties throughout the city. This is all in order to help secure and stabilize vacant sites. These property sales are critical in our ongoing efforts to curb lights and improve public safety across neighborhoods. Lastly, they put up a, from our water division, over the past few weeks, the team has completed one-hundred-and-seven liter wheels, twenty-eight liter checks and changes, fifteen hundred backhoe checks. They issued five red card notices and maybe they yield card for hackers. Uh, both water and shoes maintenance teams continue to provide high-quality service responding to work orders, if needed, effectively, in order to ensure the city's essential services are reliable and responsive. In closing, I want to thank all of our teams for their continued dedication and professionalism to our residents and for their ongoing support as we work together to build a stronger, more resilient community. That is all.
Thank you. Next, uh, we have economic development. Team, we kind of have to keep announcing you, you know where you're supposed to go at. So please do so. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, city council members and citizens. I'd like to meet with you. My name is Jesus Suarez. I'm the Economic Development Director. And I work with, uh, business development and making sure that we have jobs and professionals come to the city, uh, planning zoning. As we look at, uh, around the city and helping to beautify it and plan for a better Harvey, and also property sales, which is a big undertaking. Uh, due to that, we have a lot of property, but a lot of opportunity out there for people to really redevelop and re，请 revitalize. So on the business development front, we actually had two visitors come here. Uh, we went to the ICSC conference and we met a lot of developers there and invited them to come to Harvey, and we actually took, took, uh, we had two tours from them. And we shared with them, um, one particular, wanted to use some, uh, uh, park building development. And we shared with them four clusters of properties in downtown. Another developer was looking at single-family housing. And they wanted to put about thirty units and we shared with them, how, what would it be if we really just take on just one block and build single-family homes on it? Those two, uh, are being considered. And again, the development process takes a long time. You have to share with them one of the opportunities, a lot of tastes, a lot of methods for sale and so on. So we're just a thing that we do on a ongoing basis. Another thing on the business development side, we received eight applications for Class Eight, uh, property tax applications, and they're basically incentives to encourage businesses, uh, to really come to our community or expand. And so we have eight of them now here coming. And one is scheduled to go to the council agenda for this coming month, um, which will be dealing with an abandoned industrial building and repopuli-, uh, redeveloping that particular, uh, property. So we're excited about that. On the planning and zoning front, um, one of the things to do is we, uh, do zoning declares. If you just can't go anywhere in Harvey and set up shop, you have to get approved for that. So we, we had seventy, sixty-four zoning applications, uh, fifty-seven haven't processed, uh, as of June two thousand twenty-five, forty-four approved. Uh, we have five special use permits. And then, uh, what I wanted to say with the special use permit process, it's a way that we work with businesses today that, uh, we'd love to have you here in Harvey. Uh, but in order to really get the approval, we negotiate things like facade improvements, fencing, uh, landscaping, and making sure that they really do a fantastic job of improving, uh, their business and property. One example that you may have seen that was really a night and day difference was Prime Auto Glass on Halsted. Uh, we're excited about that. If you can see the before and after pictures, next time I'll get some photos up there. You can see what a great difference that made, uh, certainly made everybody proud and, and we're proud to have them here in our city. Um, so, uh, we'll just, uh, work with them in that. Well, we have five special use permits, uh, that paid their application. We're going to address them. Uh, August twenty-seventh, when we have a planning and zoning commission meeting, and we expect to have them all presented there. As far as property sales, the city has about ten industrial properties, eight commercial properties, about one-hundred-and-twenty residential properties. And yes, that's a lot, but that also creates opportunities. And that's why we work with developers to, and there's been steady interest in that. In fact, we've done, the city is, we declared our city properties as surplus. We have produced lists and put them online from maps and lists. You can go and find out what property interests you want, whether it's city-owned or where it's privately owned. We've also developed an approval process and also retracting them and making sure that, uh, when we review them, uh, we can bring them before council. As a result of that, what we see for right now, we're in a process of closing on four properties. Uh, J and T Group, uh, one-hundred-and-fifty, one-hundred-and-fifty, a little western, a six-tiered apartment building. They'll be invested in three thousand. Uh, Neighborhood Services, uh, they're at one-hundred-and-forty-nine, uh, twenty-eight Ks. There's an eight unit, and they're looking to invest one-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand. TK Construction, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine, uh, twenty center, um, commercial property, they're investing one-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. And then Blue Crescent States, Blue Crescent States at sixty East one-hundred-and-fifth Street, and they're investing one-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. These are, uh, on the verge of selling. And as we sell them, we expect them to develop, make that investment. And again, we receive revitalization of Harvey. So our city, our neighborhoods, and our property will take, uh, we need to take a comprehensive and multi-pronged approach, as I've been explaining. And, uh, we're all of us together, we have this great opportunity to work with residents, uh, community partners, and small, large-scale developers, uh, to rehab, renovate, and repurpose all these properties. So together we can improve the existing housing status, add to the housing status, and increase our population, and of course, improve homeownership along the way. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, News and City Council, and Harvey Residents. My name is Martin Perez. I'm the Building Director for the City of Harvey. It is both an honor and a responsibility to present this monthly report on behalf of the Building and Inspection Services Department. Our department continues to work diligently to ensure that we provide timely and effective services to our residents in our community. For the month of June, we are pleased to report the following performance highlights. Seventy permits were approved, ranging from residential upgrades to commercial improvements, helping maintain safety and compliance across our city. Twenty new contractors licenses were issued, welcoming skilled professionals to our local con- construction market. Sixty business licenses were approved, a strong sign of continued business interest in the investment in Harvey. We are excited to report the notable impacts of our new contractors, uh, expressing an interest in Harvey, working in Harvey. This increase of contractors' engagement reflects the growing trust in our department and in the city's direction. Our customer satisfaction survey is also moving exceptionally well. We are receiving a significant amount of positive feedback, particularly regarding the responsiveness and the professionalism in overall production of our department. This tells us that our efforts to be more sensible, efficient, and residential, resident-focused are making a real big impact as we move deeper into the construction season. The Building and Inspection Services Department remains committed to holding the highest standards in service, safety, and community engagement. Together, we are shaping a stronger Harvey, one permit, one property, one partnership at a time. This concludes our report.
Good evening. I'm Alexia Hall, Director of Communications for the city. I want to share exciting developments with you this evening. First, we introduced a new initiative called This Week in Harvey. It's a short, high-end-packed video update. It's ninety seconds or less that highlights the latest projects, events, and progress happening right here in our city. The goal is to keep our residents in loop with quick, consistent updates. These videos are posted across our digital platform and will soon be landing directly in your invoices. Secondly, we are in the early stages of playing our third community solution game. These begins your residents a chance to share concerns, connect with city leaders, and hear about initiatives that directly impact your neighborhoods and your city. We'll keep you informed with the date as plans solidify. Finally, I'd like to encourage all of you to follow us on Facebook and subscribe to our City of Harvey's YouTube channel. This is where we post timely updates, videos, photos, and information on city services and upcoming events. We are working hard to build trust, transparency, and to create a sense of connection across Harvey. And your continued support makes that possible. So for those of you who have not seen This Week in Harvey, let's take a look right now. This Week in Harvey, through a quick look at the people, progress, and pride shaping our city. From safety efforts to star power, we've got a lot to cover. Ready? Let's go. Harvey Police Department launched a targeted saturation effort of one-hundred-and-fifty-fourth Street to combat solicitations. Officers made arrests of both customers and individuals involved, while also offering support resources to those seeking help. The operation shows what happens when community voices are heard and public safety is a top priority. Harvey celebrated this event to stay in style with a community parade, carnival games with kids, and a fireworks finale at the end of the summer night. We want to give a huge thank you to our sponsors as incredible day of celebration wouldn't have been possible without their support. And finally, there's a little bit of Harvey in Harvey. Our city will soon be used as a filming location of season two of Apple TV series. While we can't show the name just yet, keep your eyes open. Our people will show up on your screen soon. For that's all for, uh, this week in Harvey. Stay safe, stay home, and stay proud of the progress happening right here in home. See you next time. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. To the mayor, to the city council, and residents, and my coworkers. Uh, my name is Joseph Rodriguez Jr. I'm the Director of Senior Services. Uh, our department has some minor goals. They're of health, and then form, and wellness. The greatest asset that we have in our communities are our citizens and our children. But today I'm going to make my report very short. During the, uh, last two weeks, last time we met, we had a junior team meeting near the city hall. We had a six-four guests, and we had a lot of reflections about the past and the future. Uh, July fourth, we have a, uh, singer line dancing group. We walked down the one-hundred-and-fifty-fourth street, dancing singers, had a great time. We get in line, dancing, and everybody knew the music, and they all participated. We had, uh, twenty-five guests. We're going from that to about forty-five singers. We'll be here regularly on Tuesdays and Thursdays. You're welcome to come. And closing, um, we had bingo, which is growing here, and that's once a month on Thursday. We had forty-six participants, and they love to come out. And then, they are growing into other activities like playing cards, the dominoes. They're trying to hang out with one another at different, at different homes in Harvey. What we're trying to do is get the seniors actively involved in the city. Where we have block club parties, like we used to have, some of the things that the seniors possess, the knowledge about what the community can look like and what it will be like if we work together. That is my report. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to begin by thanking everyone for being here tonight. I'm Charles Moore, the City Collector of the City of Harvey. It's an honor to speak directly with our residents, community partners, and my staff. As the City Collector, my responsibilities and my commitment is to ensure that every single dollar of food is managed effectively, transparently, and purposefully. The work we do in the Department of Revenue is not just about collecting money. It's about ensuring that the funds are available to support the services and fractures our community's resources. Over these past months, we've taken important steps forward. We've modernized our systems to improve efficiency and make it easier for residents to access information, make payments, and understand their responsibilities to the city. We've strengthened internal controls and increased financial reporting and to promote accountability and reduce risk. And importantly, we focus on listening to your concerns about buying fees, economic strengths, and finding ways to offer flexible payment plans and more effective policies. But we're not stopping here. Our vision for the year is ahead and it's clear. The future is here. We invest in our neighborhoods, improve our city services, and go hard in economy in a way that benefits everyone. I close by thanking you for your time with me back in your trust. The road ahead will be tough challenges, but transparency will keep hard in the path towards growth and stability. That concludes my report, and I want to thank you for being a part of it.
Thank you. Thank you too. The Department has the reports that you give. We are, uh, speaking with the council and their very impressive work they do, they've been doing, one and one in a month. Um, as we know, uh, there are those who say it is nothing after they know. But you definitely can establish that there is a lot of work in the, uh, in the city that's moving the city forward. It's unfortunate because many people's, uh, eyesight is so high up that they can't see beyond their relatives, to see the great work that you're doing. Um, every, everything that I heard, uh, was thought from off the city of this region all the way down to the revenue department is absolutely stunning. Um, and you guys continue to be better, um, each and every month. And your number is short. So, uh, thank you so much, uh, very much to you. We have, uh, next we are all comments of what we've been trying to get through this week. Uh, in our meeting, Fourth of July, uh, first of all, I'd like to, once again, it's there, the Department is, and all our employees are participating uh, in the Fourth of July, um, parade, big, big fireworks, fireworks display. Um, there is so much here, and there's no one believing, but we do have the best fireworks. It's our leg, um, and we keep saying that, and I dare everybody to challenge it. It shows different. Um, but as far as the Fourth of July is concerned, um, we fund that through donations. Um, and we've been funding the Fourth of July donations for quite some time, primarily because I wouldn't let the staff spend money. primarily because I wouldn't let the staff spend money on Fourth of July parade, so they had to find some other way to do it. And so, what you're seeing, or what you see, you know, a lot of times people don't understand how it happens. So they think that there's something nefarious going on. But honestly, we have a lot of sponsors, a lot of donors that contribute. And you want to see, the staff does a lot of work to make sure that's done. Now, when you look at the, when you look at say, instance, the buildings, there's money that's being paid out, and that money has been paid out because donations came in. So, and that's actually how you have been able to have your Fourth of July parade and celebrating for all the years since around 2020. We made it to 2020. So, but, you know, we also had a mayor's stuff. And mayor's stuff is a pretty ordinary soccer event that's been held for, uh...
What year?
Fourth. Fourth year, just want to make sure I had it right. It is now a big, and we have a, um... I was very pleased, there's a lot of participants. Over a thousand, a thousand people coming out to this particular event to either participate in the direct soccer or to support the teams that are playing. It is the only event that I know of in the summer that they do participate in that actually offers money. Many times they offer little trophies, participation trophies, and things like that. Well, we have grown throughout the years. And this year, the first place divisions, we had seven divisions, and each division was first and second place. The first place got a one thousand dollar prize. And the second place got five hundred dollar prizes, and they got also, uh, medals. Once again, that's due to our sponsors. We've been sponsored by Red Creek, we're sponsored by Canes, also sponsors, which I thought was really good because we only have Canes in the City of Harvey. But, you know, they sponsor, and many others do as well. That particular event is something that we, like I said, we do every year for when we're in the fourth year. We specifically, you know, would love to see the diversity in the event. It seems like more of my Mexican, my Mexican brothers and sisters participate. So we wouldn't, you know, let go of doing everybody else, but if you don't participate, you can't win. So, soccer is probably the, well, I said football, is that what you said? Football is, is the biggest sport in the world. And so, it's one of the easiest sports for people to be able to participate in, and we're glad to be able to sponsor it here. As recorded by the staff, pop those three lights, those things are being handled. They're continually handled, day in and day out. She missed B-bumps, she okay, she also missed B-bumps, she's still installing them. We have the Compromising Plan since nineteen sixty-eight. Nineteen sixty-eight. The City of Harvey finally has the Compromising Plan again, but we have not had one since nineteen sixty-eight. Rents. One of the things that people don't think understand about rents is rents come with a certain degree of trust. I think someone mentioned that over the comments or the Department of Reports, that we have to die eyes across speeds in order to get rents. We have to be able to give it straight that we can comply with whatever requirements may be as far as the rent is concerned in order for us to be able to receive it. So, when we get rents, for instance, to do Hundred Fifty Fourth Street, and a lot of people seem to appreciate it, and every way we have the Fourth of July parade going this year, that comes to a rent. We weren't receiving rents in this city for many years. There was, all women dressed to shake her head there. We weren't being, for all our debt, we were not able to receive rents in City of Harvey because we weren't dying eyes across the street. Now, can I say, is there room for improvement? Absolutely. However, City of Harvey definitely improved significantly as far as that's concerned, and it demonstrates that while some of us locally may not believe in what the administration is doing, there are people in county, there are people in state, and there are people in federal government who believe what this administration is doing and the improvements they're making. It's nice that we are able to meet some people in I C S D. I'm glad that the, um... Those representatives that went out on behalf of the city were able to make some connections and create some relationships. The Go On I C S D is going to help us to improve from an economic development standpoint, and it involves from Caesar's Forest or enjoying private things as far as that's concerned. I actually met with a developer this week that was first established to met in I C S D. And I was able to have a follow-up meeting with that particular developer. I also have another developer who I actually had a relationship with, and didn't even know that he was another member of City of Harvey. And I won't say exactly what it is until the actual construction begins, and then everyone can see. But these established relationships are still important, and it is moving us forward in the city. Finally, a few notes. One is, yes, before our last meeting, I wish everyone a happy G T. I hope everyone had a happy G T, a happy G T celebration. And of course, once again, Joe Wathan, like people call Harvey, who's like, oh, right, I did. You know, the work that you've done with seniors to make sure that we have the activities. We want to have more and more activities for our senior population. And that's not to diminish on anybody else's population. But we do have a senior, um, Department for Senior Services. Seniors seek to have some of the most, I would say, probably unique issues that they have to deal with. And at times, those issues are not understood except for by those who either have empathy or sympathy as far as handling them. And we want to make sure, um... I said it before, those are people. Where are my relatives? My relatives are the people who took care of me in this city when I was little here. And those people still live here. And those people helped me shake me into the person who I, I could have taken a lot of other directions. Could have done a lot of other things. But I didn't do those things because people were willing to cuss me and pull me to the side and explain some things to me. Okay, I had a mom who worked several jobs. So I was really raised by a village. Because of that, she didn't offer her food and her cake, but there was the village that was helping along. And I'm grateful to those people, and I will continually be loyal to those people until my dying day. So that's just fact. Those are, you know, the second example in there. First of all, Chicago P D films here is City of Harvey. Nobody says anything about that. We're back in Chicago P D, Chicago P D films here. First of all, another one is Harvey's very Royce Hawkins plays into the Ed Walker game in Chicago P D. And we're so happy, and he is so proud to be able to have some influence where he works to actually bring them back to the community in which he's grown. And so, we love the fact that he does that. And he shows whatever love he possibly can to the city the best way he possibly can. We're not expecting that to save the city, but we do appreciate the fact that he recognizes this is that way he does. Or Chief Altrich. Yeah, they do, they do hire some of our police officers to do security. They do hire, they do bring money to the city. Okay, and, and that is also helpful as well. Now, I know some people think you're putting thousands of dollars, so go on, Richard. You know what I'm saying, which might not add. That's scarcely to be thinking. But we're not going to give that, that speech today. Scarcely versus a burning statement. But that's not a lot of money, but it shows us that people believe they can work with this city to come here and film here while they can go to other municipalities such as Chicago, and they're stressed and have more difficulties trying to deal with those cities to be a purpose just to be able to film. So we invite more to come. And it just so happens that more and more filmmakers are starting to see that the Harvey administration is easier to deal with, and so they choose to do business in our city. And so, I'm proud of that. Then, last but not least, I am going to try to call the troops. Okay? I know some of y'all didn't expect this. But I know we got to call the troops. One of the things that happened when I was talking to one of the developers. When they talked about those going over the city. Developers are investors, are very concerned. They just don't like a lot of foolishness about us. And it's not to say that some are against the city or some are for it. But I need to mention, my issue is what the developers and the investors see. And when the investors and the developers see one city over here that for all intents and purposes is a city, for all intents and purposes, you know, this is a fine city. And any other city over here, as noticed is, is beyond believing. They choose a quiet city. Now, my issue, not one of those cities are perfect. Not one of those cities are absent of problems. It's just how they know about handling those problems is what makes the difference. If you don't think that they got problems in Golden Park, you haven't really invested in your own park. If you don't think that they got problems in Homer Glen, or McKenna, or Homewood, Homewood has bank robberies. Sorry, Homewood, sorry, I tried to throw you off the bus. But Homewood has bank robberies in the middle of the day. In the middle of the day. But how they handle it is different. Okay? So what I want to do, and I'm going to continue to do, first, you guys are allowed to say whatever you want to say, you can think whatever way you want to think. I'm not responding to it unless it's positively moving this city forward. So that's going to be my philosophy going forward. So, once again, freedom of speech is just that. And you're more than, you're more than welcome to accuse me of whatever you want to accuse me of. But if why you doing it, if it's not moving this city forward, I'm not pressing it. Two, as the mayor, my door is always open and the kids used to be open. If you are bringing a positive and viable solution to some of the problems that we have, I welcome you to invite you to make an appointment with the office. If you're bringing something positive and viable. But the last thing that I would like to see, the last thing we're going to see from this administration is is the degree of amendment of VTR that has continued over the past few months. We got to stop it, and I got to lead by example. So, I'm going to do just that. My focus, my main focus has always been improving the city. I'm going to continue to work and do something. My team is four and thirteen, we should work and do something. I'm true, I know it all the time, so I'm going to continue to work and do something. And you can judge us by the things that these people over here are saying. Because you can't, you can't beat that. No matter what you want to say about this administration, no matter what you want to say was going on in the City of Harvey, you can't beat that. And in no other city, you can go online, you can look at it, you don't have the Department of Engineers giving that type of information to that type of level. You don't have it. There may be an exception to a rule, because there's always an exception to a rule. But I did, you don't get it in South Lake. And they're working their hard parts off. And they continue to do something. And what we're going to do is we're going to stay positive. We're going to stay positive so that our investors can see who we are. We're going to stay positive so that our people can see that as things are happening that are maybe not satisfactory, we are trying to come up with solutions. And we're being by every single person, friend or foe, that if you have a viable solution and you know how to do it better, bring it to us. Write it down, put together a proposal, show us how it can be done. We're going to continue to, 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 to instill on this so that everyone can see. But as far as we're concerned, the debate for the amendment of VTR, that's all. It is not productive for our city. It keeps investors from wanting to invest in our city. And for those of you who are here from our neighboring community that have been dealing with that type of, uh, issues for the past, I don't know, four years, two years, however long it takes, you're going, you're going to have to go through that same issue as well. Because investors watched how the community was. Not just the administration, but how the community conducted itself. And I can guarantee you that that's going to have an impact on your ability to attract investors in the future. So, I don't know if some consider that to be an obvious branch or gun, but it is. And I hope that you will take it in the spirit of what you're seeing. That'll be it, everybody. Yeah, it's nothing else, other than good or bad. Chill is saying, voting to a turn, vote by the first. Oh, we got the votes by the third already, and the second, third, and the sixth. I was thinking, I was going to say that. All right. And those opposed, here we go, we stand, adjourned, adjourned, eight fifty-three. God bless, each and every last one of you. Appreciation, compliments. We will welcome your solutions, and change the attitude greatly, and we'll see you soon.
Alright, so that was, those were the lives of the evening, you all heard. Is that Nikita? Next to Mayor Clark's mom, or am I imagining it? Look at, look, we still have, look at all these cops. One, two, three armed cops. Four armed cops, five, six, seven if you include the chief. Probably more. It's uncommon, yeah. There's Maganya again harassing. Didn't get any time at all in here. Thanks Ted, thanks everybody for tuning in, tuning in. Hey, you never know. Hang tight, you never know what'll happen. I don't know where Jed is, I don't think he's here, but you got everything? Thanks for coming. Who sent you guys? No, I said, thanks for coming. Who, who sent you guys? Just the producers, that, or whatever? Right? Am I imagining, but I think, I think that's who I'm thinking of right there. Okay, I'm not. So you can see all the cops. All the cops. I'm sitting here because they're like right away. Like, he's like really, really, really fast, but I guess not so much. So, go right ahead. Okay, because you know they're going to want to, they're trying to chase me out now. They're horrible. They don't even let us, they don't even support us in our own building. So here we go. We got one, two, three, four, five armed officers sent to chase us out. I always like to count, I always like to count the officers that they used to chase us out after every meeting. It's so horrible. Our own city hall. So we, we're at five right now. Melissa, what do you think? Tell us. What'd you think about the meeting? Tell everybody.
A bunch of trash.
Did you believe what Clark was saying?
Not a damn thing he said came out his mouth was truth.
A few people said they wish you had made public comment.
I sure wish I would've got here early enough, but I promise y'all, next time I got something to say.
Yes, so she says next time. She didn't forget, you guys. She didn't forget. But yeah, do you see, oh, I'm, so we have one police vehicle, two, three police vehicles.
Hey, that's the girl right there who chose to take the report. Her right there.
Oh, good. Thank you.
The little young girl. They training her already.
Now they're flashing the lights. Oh my God, look at all the cops. That's right. This is, actually, we pay for this parking lot. We pay for.
Look at the police force, y'all.
I know.
Weapon a, hey, didn't you hold me for 10 hours? Wasn't that true?
Can't even use our own parking lot and, and building that we pay for. Look how he uses the police to chase away. I think she's talking about Maganya, right here, who was also arrested Colby the last time. Why are you guys chasing us out? We're just neighbors. You just want to talk. Wow.
I shocked you when I came out that room praying, didn't I? Under the anointance of God. Yes, I did. Yes, I did. I shocked you, didn't I? I shocked you that I knew the law, didn't I?
Isn't it crazy? Look at, look at the heavy police presence.
Why you standing there with that badge?
Police presence.
When you know you broke, when you, when you know you broke the law, why y'all won't slap the cuffs on him? He the lawbreaker.
Right?
You the lawbreaker. You the lawbreaker.
Right, exactly.
What happened to my internal affairs complaint? Where's my internal affairs complaint? Because I left all y'all voicemails. What happened to my internal affairs complaint that I found?
Right.
Now, I'm asking what happened to it? Because I've been calling, why I've been calling, talking nights? I've been calling, talking nights, what a complaint. Oh, okay, you ain't got a message from me? What's your position? You deputy chief? I filed an internal affairs complaint. Okay, I sent him an email. So when y'all gonna answer it? Okay, when?
Look at all these cops.
When? What's the timeline? What's the timeline that you're supposed to answer? That you're supposed to answer? Yeah, if you start telling the truth, I'm gonna cut you off when you let up. Okay, then that means that you a liar. Thank you.
And that's the same officer that, he grabbed my neck last year when I was arrested illegally. That's the same one. Derek Charles.
Y'all disgrace to the badge. I got chiefs and police officers in my family. Y'all were disgrace to them.
I agree. I totally agree. Why didn't you guys just go home? We're not causing any problems. Jeez. Go, go man, go man the streets. Go keep our seats, our streets safe for us. He says I'm going to get hit by a car. That's why I have to leave.
I got a chief of police in my family. Y'all can play with it if y'all want to.
Mm-hmm. Tell Melissa. She's right. She's not wrong. They're used to, by the way, they're, these cops are used to doing all this unchallenged. They harass us constantly. Hey, thanks for coming. Good, good night. What'd you say? Oh, yes, I appreciate it. We appreciate you. It's all your sister. I said, hey. Look at this. So sad. All these cops. So this is where our tax money is wasted. You see? Remember that one day when I was in the parking lot and they were chasing me? See, this is not, this is why I was covering it, because it happens all the time, all the time. So Melissa's right, everything, about everything she said. They do not need to chase peaceful residents out of our own city hall parking lot. It's crazy. It's just totally crazy. Hmm, there's the police chief. Now I remember, all these people did nothing when I was manhandled and put in cuffs and they threw me against the wall and everything. I was arrested last year illegally. All those people did nothing. That's Derek Charles. So apparently he's still deputy chief, or he's deputy chief again? Yep, see minion? Yep, yep, yep. See? Look at that. Now you know why I covered it that day when I was covering traffic court? Because it happens all the time. This is all the time. We can't even use our own city hall. Hey, did you guys, did you want to comment live? You want to say anything? Oh, anything. What do you think, Ms. Chappelle? How was the meeting?
Um, I think they went up through the front.
What did you think about, uh, did you believe Clark? He says he wants to call a truce. Do you think it's true?
I just think all of it is bull. It's all lies. Um, like always. There's been plenty of times for, plenty of years for him to have things done correctly. And, and, and in a proper and the right way, but we have, we have not had that.
Do you think Clark is feeling the pressure? Is that why maybe he's saying he's going to call for?
The news here now, so with the news being here.
Hmm, look at all these cops.
He's gonna say anything, you know?
Right, right. Hmm, interesting.
How they go. When it, when it comes down to being, um, advertised, he's gonna say anything. That he think the people want to hear.
And did, did you want to say anything, um, Reverend? Because usually you give public comments tonight. Was there anything that you wanted to share in the live that maybe you didn't get to share in there?
Um, no public comment. There was no treasurer's report as usual. And these departments like the revenue department and the finance department, they should, by Illinois state's normals to our treasurer, the treasurer should be getting this information and she should be deciphering it all. And she should be able to do some kind of a check and accountability on it. But instead, they're doing her job and illegally, I believe, illegally doing the treasurer's job in the city of Harvey. The treasurer didn't even get to speak at all, and all these reports were given and nothing about the dollars spent by the police, the fire, no exact figures for the week, for that month. If this, if this is a monthly report, then why for the month, the amount spent and the amount gained and the amount received was not given? That could have been given by the treasurer from each department, but it wasn't. So I feel that they're doing it illegal because they're leaving the treasurer out. And for some reason, there seems to be a hidden agenda in this. So until they do this, I will not be satisfied in the city of Harvey because there is no accountability. A bunch of empty reports, just like a man with an empty suit. If there's nothing inside the suit, it's no more than a matic and it has no purpose. Just to look good. And that's what the night was. And it's besides that, the police at the back of the building. You know, the police at the back of the building, uh, when they were, when people were coming out of the mayor's such made an eloquent speech about coming together and having a truce, truce, and the first thing they did was told us to get off the parking lot. I don't think that shows anything about a change. I think he needs to first relay to the police department that he's making a truce with the citizens. And then it's believable. Right now, I don't believe it. I don't believe a word of it until they show the actual, actual actions to be shown what's supposed to be really happening.
And you were a police chief for a time. Is this how you treated your residents after a meeting?
No possible way. These people pay their taxes and they earn the right to be able to go through a community protected by the police, not being accosted by the police. Because when the police becomes a part of the city hall where the citizens are afraid, then we have no more than a communist state. And so if we have a communist state, then where's the freedom? Where, what are you getting banged for the buck? Look where this gazebo right behind us, there's a gazebo sitting there. And they were talking all the great things and they just put the flags up.
Oh, right.
But you look at the gazebo still, the floor, the bottom of it is all, the concrete is all bent up and everything. And they have this, uh, tape around it. It looks horrible. This represents the city hall. This is the first thing they see when they come to the city hall, exactly.
And the sidewalk looks like it's caving in or something?
Yes, and it's a disgrace. And it's a monument. And there's three people, three citizens of Harvey on the plaque there between the first two flags over there. And their names are on that plaque. Their names being on that plaque means that they were taking the work to make Harvey beautiful. But now this administration doesn't seem to care about it. So that's where I say that until I actually see something really gone, then I won't believe it.
Okay, well, thank, thank you. Thank you for sharing with us. And we're going to go, I'm going to go see what they're doing on Myrtle. I don't know what's happening, but. Oh, there's Amir. He's still here. Okay. Thank you for sharing. Amir was one of the public commenters. I was maybe going to ask him for a quote too. Amir? Amir? Oh, Jed, I don't know, he never say much. I'll tell you that. Yeah, no, he came to my house to harass me. And I have an order, I have an order of protection against him, but he came to my house anyway. Hey, do you guys want to, do you, would you want to comment on live about the meeting at all? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. Oh, I missed it. Okay, I'm sorry. Because you know the police are trying to chase, they're, and they're, Maganya keeps threatening to like arrest me or something.
Come here.
Ms. Treasurer, I'm so sorry that you were not able, you weren't even acknowledged tonight. I'm so sorry. Oh, yes, that's so true. What did you think about that? Oh my God, did you hear that to him here? That one of Mayor Clark's, uh, supporters said they actually wanted to eliminate the treasurer position. Instead of showing us where the money is going, because really that's what it's about, right? We've been asking that for years.
So you know what I'm curious about? I'm curious about the truce. Because I, I left off before we did a truce. Is it because, is it, is it because we're doing a truce because now we're looking at a federal investigation for Rico charges? Because that's what's happening. You know, when you beat, this is what I want to say on Ryan's live. When you beat up a foreign national business owner, you activate a ragtag mob of not even activists, but this mob physically harassed and beat up an individual business owner. Who activated them? Who gave them the authority? The devil is in the details. So what happens next? Hey, I, I, you know, we can try it in the court of law. We'll allow the authorities to do what they have to do, but let's share the information and let's do it in the court of public opinion. Never should a business owner be harassed, threatened with violence, thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars of inventory have been stolen from this individual. And guess what? We're working with his attorney and he's ready to come forward and make additional statements, including the employees, who, his employees who are harassed with guns. So this is not something that we made up. This is not a myth. So maybe Mr. Clark is doing a truce because of that. So look at the Thorn Township Citizens Action Committee, if you're not on there. And we're going to share the report starting this evening. And if the authorities don't pick it up because we know that that takes a long time, let's try it in the court of public opinion. And let's get Mr. Clark and these guys out of here. We are asking for his resignation. Clark, you have to step down, sir. You're, you are no good for the community.
You agree, you agree. And you know, you know I back you in that. I totally back you in that.
Let's go.
He, him and his four alder guests, men who don't do anything. Now, what did you think about, you know, we talked about some of those, those, uh, aldermanic expenses where it seems that Shirley Duente is able to spend whatever money she wants, but my alderman, she can't even get anything. And then, and then we have, look, look at this gazebo. Look, the sidewalk's falling in, there's caution tape. So what, what, Amir, what do you think as, as, you're, you're coming in these meetings and you hear him saying, we don't have money? But then you find out they're partying in the first ward.
Well, the devil is in the details. And I'll tell you what. When it, when, when there's one rotten apple, there're going to be many rotten apples. So I'm going to tell you what, let's keep shaking the tree. Let's get these rotten apples off the tree and let's take them down one step at a time. These things are really serious. And if you go down, if you go down broad, if you go down Broadway, it's getting better. Now, we don't, I don't want to take that away, but there's a lot of issues, including the finances that are being hidden. So we don't want to window dress anything. You know what I'm saying? If we, if we're distracted on one small area, then the bigger picture is not going to follow through or show up. So let's talk about the serious issues. And starting with Mr. Clark and asking him to step down, we are going to show that report tomorrow. And we'll try it in the court of public opinion while we're waiting on the federal authorities to make their move. Just reminder, they still haven't did anything in the Dalton, the Dalton case with Tiffany Hendry. It takes a while, but again, we can do it in the community, share the information, and let's get great leadership in Harvey for the future. That's all.
I agree with that. Tomorrow should be a big news day then, because we have the township meeting as well. Will you be there?
Yeah, that's another new monster. But I mean, you know, it's.
I'll be, I should be there.
We're in the fight all the way from, uh, our local, all the way up to our national, and, uh, we got to stick it out. But keep sharing the information, keep communicating, and let's keep that information going, because that's what people need. We got to help them make up their minds when they can't.
Sounds good. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Yeah, Chappelle said something about they're going to 150 Third and Myrtle for something, so. Uh, no, Chappelle.
Chappelle?
So, by the, yeah, by the church that Clark went to the mall.
Because that was a good move.
Yeah.
To do that.
So I'm, I'm going to go over there. I don't know what they're doing, but I'll stop by.
Yeah, I'll watch your line. That was a good move.
Thank you, guys. Oh, yeah, here's our other part of YouTube. Hey, so how you doing, everybody? Ah, yes, we got Ramona's out tonight. We had a great crowd tonight. We had a good turnout, right? What did you ladies think? Anything, uh, interesting you wanted to share? Any insights?
I talked to the treasurer. I thought that was a dig.
Yeah, what did you think about, they called for her, her, to be fired and her position to be eliminated? But to my understanding, it's not her fault, right? Like, she's not being given the information. But to my understanding, it's not her fault, right? Like, she's not being given the information to give a report.
Yeah, I just thought that she's like, she was shocked to hear it, remember?
Yeah. That's our treasurer in the green, folks, so.
Yeah, it's so, that's the craziest thing you ever wanna hear. And first of all, they didn't talk about that shooting of Pow Pow that was on 145th and Green.
Oh, tell us, okay, cause I didn't even know about that. When was this?
It was like last fall. No, that was, that was this.
Just a few days ago?
Maybe?
Okay, so not that long ago.
Oh, my God, Ryan.
Ah!
When I tell you, it was like, they had, like, they were going back and forth, back and forth.
Wow.
And I, and I saw it on the citizen app, but I just, it was thirsty. And I saw that there was a, somebody, it was a shooting on the end of the block.
Hmm.
But I didn't go investigate, cause it was at night.
Right, I don't blame you. It's like, safety first, right?
Why don't y'all alert the residents that there has been some kinda shoot? It was right, they had the church parking lot taped off. So I don't know, did something happen to the people in the church?
Hmm.
Or what?
See, and that's crazy, cause I try to keep my, you know, to, to know what's going on. I, this is the first I've heard of it. So that means that.
Don't tell us what's going on.
Right, exactly.
145th and Green always has something. That in the month before that, they hadn't found a body, you know, unalive in there. Uh, but they're not telling us.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And then you see where they had the people, the lady, how, how's the lady doing who got her foot in her leg mall, her foot mall?
I did text her, um, I wanna say last week. She said, you know, it's, it's a process. It's gonna be a long process. A long process. So I, I, I just wanted her to know that we hadn't, hadn't forgotten about her.
Okay, good.
So, but yeah, no, they're, they're hanging in. But it's crazy. It's in, and then, see, you, you see things like that where it sounds like it's a hotspot, right, in North Harvey? And then you, you see how they're, how the mayor is allocating all our police resources? We had, I counted probably at least maybe 10 to 15, once again, fully armed officers right after the meeting. Like, what, what?
I don't even see all that on the street.
Right, I was gonna say like, like, where's the violent crime? Like, the, I, I mean, I'm, no one was shooting here tonight. No one was fighting. No one was arguing. Like, I don't know why they're here.
I don't either.
And then you said there, there's, see, there's a hotspot in North Harvey. They should be at the hotspot.
By the, a car wash?
Yep.
Not the first time they ran down the street. And, uh.
Right. And, and it's just so frustrating when they, you know, they, they, um, you know, are not using our, our, our resources correctly. And then all this wasting money and lies and look, they put up a cute, oh, look at Disney princess thing. On the building that Clark wants to demolish. He demolished the three other ones. And he's such a liar tonight, cause he was talking about bringing investors. I've brought investors. I've talked to a lot of investors. They don't, they don't wanna come here because they know how horrible he is. He, he, he wants, he wants something. He's not just gonna give him the property.
Yeah, it's more to the story.
Mm-hmm. Alright, you guys, we'll all head over to the 153rd and Myrtle. Maybe I'll see you there. If not, good night. Okay, so now I'm leaving you guys because, you know, I don't trust these people. But yeah, you guys can, we, I still got, um, still got about 50 folks. Let's, let's see if they're doing anything on Myrtle, you know, and if not, uh, we'll just go from there. Oh, Jesus. Did you hear that? Wow. Oh my God, I got my papers. And this, and that, and everything, and everything. But look at, look, look how they treat us. Look at this, look. Like, are we like little kids? Oh, and then on the queue, you said that they moved to July 22nd. Oh, okay. Thank you for letting me know that. Okay, and I, I did not realize that about the township meeting. That's good to know. Okay. Very good to know. Alright, let's head over. And. Whoop. You guys can see a little bit of what's going on as I drive. But look at all that. That's so excessive. Like. Why do you need, why, why does there need to be all that police? Misappropriation of our resources at the very least, you know? At the very, very least. I'll, I'll take on and show you for it. So you guys can see a little bit, if you're just tuning in for the first time. So that was our city hall there. This is the corner where, uh, last year and the year before, we were fighting with the mayor. Um, they demolished three historic buildings that I had brought investors for, that said they were interested in buying them with their own funds, not asking money from the city to try to fix those up. Um, this property is still, um, left, but Clark has said he wants to demolish that one. So it's just a shame, you know, a lot of what he said, because I, I'm a realtor and I, um, specialize in urban planning and investment and, um, you know, sustainable ethical, uh, development. I just get so frustrated because it, he just lies, you know? And we've, oh, there's another cop. Like, jeez, what a waste. This building, see how that's boarded up? Look. I mean, we have so many wonderful resources here and they just sit empty. They just sit empty. It's like, okay, so you've been in the office for six years. If I were mayor for six years, you would, you better believe these buildings would be occupied and be being, you know, fully occupied and used. You don't just let stuff sit. So it's, it's really frustrating, but at least you can see a little bit of what we do. There's a drug hotspot that we're told that the Harvey police, um, protect. That's another building that had a mysterious fire. This is our, one of our old, our old city hall from the 1890s. It's pretty. This is where they have some of the fencing put up for that movie that they're filming or that TV series. So I don't know. And again, no, I don't think anybody's against filming in Harvey. I think the issue is, you know, we just wanna know, well, what benefit is the community getting? That is a grocery store, but look, we used to have a really good bakery there. That's been closed for years. That is, I believe, one of the old, uh, theater. I think that's our last remaining theater building. It's used for offices now, but that used to be a theater. And for those of you who don't know or just tuning in, I do the Harvey Historical Society, so I'm all into, you know, uh, let's, let's preserve and save these old buildings because it, it saves money. It's, it's, um. You know, you, you, you get affordable housing, you get affordable space for people to have their businesses in, to have little shops when you reuse these old buildings. When you just demolish them and you put up, you know, like a cheap, ugly strip mall, the rents are gonna be super high. And it just looks ugly. Like, who, who wants to see that? But you know, a lot of these politicians, they don't care. It's just about quick money. This is the block. Look, isn't it so sad? This is where they kicked out all the homeowners. Look at this. The homeowners. Oh, go ahead. This is where, you see where the light is on? That's where I interviewed Ms. Dorothy and where they said that there are, uh, some squatters right now. Sorry, I'm gonna put my window down so you don't see the glare. So again, I don't know what the heck's going on in there. I don't know who's in there. But that was her house. And they, they, they basically took her house from her, which is horrible, but that's what happened. That is what's happening. And I don't know who all these people are. Um. So, yeah. I'm gonna park here. I thought Chappelle said she was coming, but I'll ask. I'll see what's going on. I'll ask who these people are so we can figure that out. It's a nice summer night here. It is pretty hot and humid, but it's normal for this time of year, huh? Hi. So again, people, just months ago, people lived in these buildings and they were kicked out. That's where the squatter, but they were kicked out. Some of them, the buildings have squatters. They were kicked out for, for the mayor's park that we never asked for, never wanted, so. Hey, do you guys know? Do you know who they are?
Yeah, it's Jedidiah, you know. So the, the squatters are near.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, good thing I didn't stop. Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, this is great. We got 58 people live right now watching. I don't know what that is. I don't know. Look, this is the church Clark wants to demolish. That's where I was baptized. He's just, he's just an idiot and a, and a, and, um. Doesn't know how to govern, doesn't use money. You know, it's, it's all about him. He's selfish. The word you say? So these, okay, so this is the activist people? This is the Jedidiah. I saw, um. Hey, Mandy. Hi, Burgundy Boo. So I saw it's one Texas plate, you guys, but otherwise I don't know who those people are. Is Chappelle out there?
No, no, no. Yes, Chappelle is out there.
Okay, okay. Yeah, cause if it's Jed, if it's, you know, I don't wanna approach if it's Jed there.
Yeah, it is, so.
So I'll just keep my distance, but, but I am curious to see what's going on. This is a good place to watch. So again, if you're just tuning in, this is where, if you go, go to my YouTube channel, Ryan's Gate Chicago, and Clark, start, get out of here. I'm not following Jedidiah. I live here. He does not. Go away. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ban you if you comment again. Um. So this is where I interviewed Ms. Dorothy. Go to, go to Ryan's Gate Chicago. I had an interview from her last year. This poor lady was taken, was kicked, kicked out of her house that she was set to live in, you know, for her retirement. Look at that beautiful house. Lights are on. Somebody's in there.
Something they were.
She put a lot of time and effort and care into that house. Jed did say during the meeting, he was going to quote unquote, handle the, uh, squatters or something. I don't know what's going on, so. You know, I'm not getting too close, but I do wanna know what's going on because, again, oh, we got Harvey cop car. So again, this, this is what I was talking about during the meeting or my public comment. If you listen, I said that, that the mayor is using our public, our police, our tax money with the police to protect Jed and his team. As they go around. Oh, yeah, it's fine. Cause I don't think that's, oh, I see, yeah. Um, so you two are stronger together than the person. No, what? Wait, what? No, shy girl, get out of here. Get the fuck out of here. I live here. He does not. And I'm covering what's going on. So get out of here. Two are stronger together. Yeah, AKA Jed. It's, it's a shame that he's working for Clark and everything now. So again, this is, this is where I live. So he's coming. Now he has the, the protection of the, the, um, Harvey Police Department to go and, and, you know, we, we had people a few years ago who were volunteering to fix up homes and help people who were squatting and everything and board them up. And, and Mayor Clark had the people ticketed and went after them time and time again to harass them until they just stopped. These people were doing it with donations. They were doing it because they cared, because the city wouldn't. Okay? And now, thank you, status quo. Exactly. Jed brings nothing positive. So how does Jed just pop in and, um, thank you, Kevin, yeah? How does Jed just pop in and then, and then happen to get police protection to go and harass business owners, to harass me, to harass residents, and then he's gonna quote unquote, deal with the squatters? Like, we, he is not a paid part of this government. We pay for city staff who are supposed to, in a compassionate, humane way, deal with these issues. Okay? Now, don't forget, the MWRD and Mayor Clark pushed these residents out of their homes. This was lovely. Ms. Dorothy Taylor, this was her home. Go find the interview on Ryan's Gate Chicago. It was from last summer, I wanna say, we had an interview. And it was, it's just heartbreaking and it's infuriating to see people pushed out of their homes. So if you're like, well, why is the block so dark besides that streetlight? Why is the block so dark? Because the people that were here in their homes were pushed out. They were forced to sell by Mayor Clark because he wanted the land. He says they wanna build a pond and a park. We don't want a frickin' pond and a park. We want people to be able to stay in their homes, that are taxpayers. Some of these people were the first black people to be able to move to this block when Harvey was segregated. And they bought their homes and they just, they raised their kids. They wanted to retire here and die here. But no, Chris Clark wouldn't let them. You've, you guys, please come to the meetings. Please speak up. Thank you again for following, cause this is the kind of stuff that we, we just, we do not want this in our community. And this is the kind of, the kind of man that Jedidiah is supporting and, and Mayor Clark is, is sending protection for him as he is harassing us in our own community. Mary Walker, again, get out of here, Mayor Walker. Go away. Exactly, Kevin. Keep donating to a fraud. I guess that's Jed's motorcade, yeah. I'm not following Jed, Mary Walker. I live here, Mary. Mary Walker, where do you live? Get off my channel. Trying to, don't, don't, don't be a little stooge for Jed. Kinda looks like you're stalking. No, that's okay, but he did come to my house stalking me, but anyway. Hmm, right. Jed doesn't live here. It doesn't even matter if he does. I, I live here. I have the right to cover what's going on, cause I wanna know what's going on in my community. So, yeah, get the fuck out of here with those fake. Stop gaslighting. Stop projecting. We don't want, we're the ones that do not want, uh, Jed here. We don't want these scammers. Actually, maybe I'll set my camera up, you guys, because, sorry, I know, I, I hate when it gets all wobbly like that. Is Keith Price running for mayor? I saw that question. Good question. I don't know. He has in the past. I don't know if he's going through now. I can hear Chappelle. I can hear Chappelle. So Chappelle is apparently there doing something. She's talking with Jed. I'm, you know, I'm kinda, I'm keeping my distance. Um. Mm-hmm, right, yeah, yeah. Trust me, Jed, Jedidiah is not helping. He's, he's not helping anything. Yeah, I don't know if it's necessarily super ugly, but it's not, not a very productive night. I mean, we just heard a lot of lies in the meeting. The bar. Yeah, I wish I could show more, but I don't, but they had their lights on, so it's a little bit hard to see. You know what? Maybe I'll move to the opposite side of the street. Look at the poor church. Look at, look, this is so sad. Look at that. Beautiful, beautiful. And Clark just went to demolish it. They don't take care of it. Look how they let, I wanted to show you guys too how, um, and I've covered this block plenty of times, but look at, oops, come on, zoom out, not in. Not in. Zoom out, sorry. Anyway, but you can see, look at, look how they don't cut the grass or anything. Isn't this horrible? These are all properties that were just acquired from the city of Harvey, just recently. Now, some of them are maintained, but a lot of them aren't. Look at that one in the corner, aren't. Cause there's still a few residents living on the block, but most are gone. I mean, this is horrible. This is so overgrown. You can't even see the church. I'll, I'll show you. If I move this way, you can see the church. There it is. It's so pretty. So yeah, that's where I was baptized. That's where my family went to church and school. My grandparents were married there. And that's one of the things Clark wants to demolish. And these buddies, which is Goon Squad here. But yeah, let me, without getting too close, I'm gonna try to cover a little bit of, so you guys can see a little bit. Again, uh, I don't know what they're doing exactly, but someone said something, oops, someone said something about. Uh, this house having squatters. Oh, Chappelle did. And now, um, I just showed up and then I, I knew that there were some people here. I didn't know it was, I guess it's Jed's team. So I don't know, I don't know what they're doing exactly what they're talking about, but that looks like Jed, it looks like Chappelle. It's just hard to see since we're in front of them with their lights. I apologize. Hey, GARDIS, how you doing? Uh, and Kevin? Yeah, thanks again, Kevin. Uh, actually, the, the judge said Jed, uh, Jed could be at the meeting. Um, you know, he just is not supposed to, to be contacting me, that's all, so. And again, I can cover, I can, you know, film him or what, like whatever's going on, especially, I mean, I'm in public, right? I'm not in a private place. Um, he just cannot have contact with me, that's all. Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that's the same SUV that was, um, there when Jed came and attacked me at my house, uh, on the 4th of July. Uh, I don't know, GARDIS, so what happened is Chappelle, during the meeting tonight, she mentioned that one of these homes had squatters. These are one of the homes that, that the mayor, um, and the MWRD where they forced the residents out. You know, really, really anger, angering, um, maddening, a sad story. And supposedly there's squatters there, so Chappelle mentioned she was gonna check it out. I didn't know Jeb was gonna be here, but I guess Jed's here too. Um, yeah, so we're just, we're just checking out what's going on, just trying to see. Look at that. Look at that beautiful building, beautiful apartment building. Again, Clark wants to demolish all of it to build a park and a pond. Right, exactly. Thanks, GARDIS. Do you see what I mean? So if you were tuned in earlier, or if you didn't, I may, part of my public comment was, why is Mayor Clark using our money and our police to protect Jedidiah and his team of instigators and bullies and, and harassers to, you know, they doxed me on July 4th. And, um, you know, he, he's gone around. And um, you know, he, he's gone around and he's trespassed on, on private property with the protection of Harvey police, okay? So that's how we know that, that he's working with Clark. Um, and then you can see here, like, well, okay, great. You want to be an activist? Great, be an activist. Why are you here? At a house that we, um, that I've covered, I've reported on many times. Mary Walker, like I said, get out of here. No. Why don't you, you stop being obsessed with him, with the stalker and a bully. Leave me alone. You're part of it. You know, but why, why, why is he coming here with police protection? We've asked for them to maintain the grass. We've asked for them to address the squatter. We've asked for the city to do this for months. So now, so they ignore us, but now they're gonna send uh, the police to protect Jedidiah Brown. And then what is he doing here? And why is he even here to begin with? So, I don't know, doesn't make sense to me. They don't make sense to me, guys. Big Mike, don't worry, Big Mike, that's okay. Let people, people can say what they want to say. I would rather see, I, I'd rather, I'll, I'd rather see, and I can use it as evidence for when I go to court, of how they're just so harassing. The cult is a scam, right? It sure is. Okay, so they're getting in some cars right now. Right, burgundy, right? Yeah, they're just, it's just whatever, doesn't matter. But my thing is, oh, 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 Harvey Police are actually going, good. So maybe that's a good thing that since Chappelle said, spoke up about this at the meeting. That's the first I've ever seen Harvey Police. And when I talk to residents in the block, they, you know, as far as seeing the police come and check out. I don't know who that is. Okay, that's not one of our police cars. Somebody. But yeah, isn't that church beautiful? Burgundy? So beautiful. It's beautiful. Yeah, it's just a shame they want to get rid of all of it. And like I said, we had, we had some of these residents, um, Ms. Mary Walker, to give you an idea of what kind of um, uh horrible person that you're, you're supporting, um Jed's working with Clark and some of these folks were the first black families to be able to live, to buy homes on this block when Harvey was desegregating. And um, and Clark pushed them out, they're elderly. They raised their kids. They were successful. They achieved the American dream. They got a house on a beautiful block. They paid their taxes. They were contributing citizens to society. And Clark said, you gotta go. Hey, guys. I mean, can you believe that? Can you believe that? Yeah, eighth grade career, right, right? Ha ha, see, Ms. Miss retracted it. Cause you know, I took, I, I just screenshot all this stuff, you know? Give me more evidence for my cases. Go ahead. Cause remember, you're all, the, the, the no stalking order includes harassment from third parties, so. Ms. Miss, was the pond necessary? No. Absolutely not necessary. And we, we did not want, we, we actually collected more than almost thirteen hundred signatures of people saying that we did not want this pond or the park. And we were totally disregarded. That appears to be the police chief. Oh, probably being extra under Rango, that, yeah. Well, um, that, that sounds good. The, the sad thing about the squatters is that the neighbors that are around that were like, we actually care and we watch out. So people have been calling the police and telling them about this, and they haven't responded. So if anything, it's good that Chappelle mentioned it in public comment, you know, maybe that helps. Um, I don't know who that is. That, so there, it looks like there's a lady there filming. There's a gentleman there in a white t-shirt. Um, yeah, I don't know exactly who the other people are. That is history in Harvey. Yeah. We have a lot of beautiful old historic buildings. They're beautiful. Wow, look at one, two, three, I think four? Do I see four police cars? Look at the lights. Look at that. Wow. Sorry, I know with the glare with the phone, you can't exactly see, but further down there are some red and, red and blue lights. So I can tell you it's at least three police cars. No, I'd say four police cars. Why are they doing a pond? What's the purpose? They say it's for flood relief, but it's not true. It's, it's, we don't need a pond for flood relief. But they're just not listening. Why can't Jeb help? I'm just, Jeb, why do you come to? No, we can't talk, no. AKJ, you cannot talk with a crazy person. No. But thank you. I appreciate the is the abandoned church Ascension St. Zanetti? Yes, GARDIS, you should help us save it. You know about Ascension, right? Yeah, Clark wants to knock it down. It's sad that Jed takes advantage of the mentally challenged and takes their money. He absolutely does. Yeah, see if you guys can see anything. Okay, I see some, some more people coming out of the house. It looks like okay, it looks, yeah, I think it's three, three officers, it looks like, three cops. I saw a white shirt though, I believe, and he was kinda short, so I think it was our, our, I think it was our chief. I mean, like I said, in a way, at least hopefully it's a win-win for the, for the neighbors in that um we're finally getting attention for the squatters. But I mean, people have, we've been complaining and the city just ignores us. They totally ignore. My friend was the last brief there. Aw, GARDIS, aw. Right, exactly. Yes, Mandy, right. Clark's just, he, he's trying to, to, to look like he's staying busy. And a lot of the projects that he's pursuing, unfortunately, usually he stands to gain something from them. Um, like he, he doesn't, he's a very poor uh, manager. And he does not know, um, he just doesn't know how to, to govern a city. Like, I would be a much better mayor. No offense. I think there, I know several people that could be much better mayors, I think. Clark might be renting those homes to them. Could be illegally, not supposed to happen. And Javard, yeah, he is, because he, he is. No, it's nothing personal. It's no, it's no insult. Do you see how he's on the shorter side of things? He's the guy I think got into that car. There's Chappelle. I'm gonna try to go closer. Hey, Joe. Okay, so now they're looking at this building. Whoops, sorry. But yeah, he is renting. I mean, again, we need to know about that because they forced people out of these homes to build this project. So if they're not building the project, you know what I mean? That's really important, so. Okay, so I see Chappelle, you guys. I don't know who that guy is. Here's the chief. Did they, were there people in that building too? Okay, I don't know. They're saying maybe, possibly. So again, it's, they're just looking to see if, I guess that there are squatters in these buildings. They're beautiful buildings and some of them were just lived in recently. Get back right now is, that is this, oh, yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yep. Again, remember, when you have a, when you have a um, when you have more protection, I am here. First of all, I live here. Okay, I fucking live here. Jed does not. But secondly, I'm covering news. So actually, when you have more protection against someone, it is up, it's incumbent upon that person to stay away from you. So if they're already at a place and I'm there to do something, then they have to stay away from me. Yeah, right? That's why I said, at least one good thing maybe came of it, right? Chappelle speaking. Jesus, the lights are excessive, you guys. Like, does it have to be that bright? And here we have the, the chief with some residents checking out. Was there anybody in there too? No? Okay. Well, that's good. Cause you guys have called the, the, you've called the police before. Had they ever come out before?
Yeah, they said it was nothing that they could do.
Oh, well, good thing Chappelle spoke up, so maybe tonight, I mean, I'm thinking maybe because she made her public comment now. Cause people are, are asking lots of questions online right now. They're like, what is that? Where are those buildings? What are they doing? You know, I'm, so I'm trying to explain. And it's just, just such a waste. Look at, that is a gorgeous building. I, I so would love to have that. Get that building fixed up, get some renters in there. So you see, you see guys like, what you heard tonight from Clark? He's not telling the truth. He doesn't care. He don't care. Otherwise, he wouldn't be pushing people out of their homes. If there's anything I've learned is, can't just listen to what people say, right? So you can see Chappelle is there with Jed, I think, right there. Oh, Carlita, did you tell, did you tell Amir?
No, I'll, he, here he is, right here.
Oh, is he here? Okay, cool. Cause I, I mentioned that I was gonna stop over by the church, um, but I didn't. So Amir is here as well. Okay, so that's Jedidiah, that's Chappelle. This is Amir, isn't it glasses? And this is the chief.
Hello, how are you?
All right, how you doing?
I'm good. We just out here dealing with these other properties, heard what was going on. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, joy, my man.
Nice to meet you, Joe. We're gonna take care of this tomorrow, so we'll take the eyes, but we're not gonna send these guys in at night. Dark in there, the floor is messed up. We are gonna have to come back over. Well, no, we definitely have to come back over. We get it boarded up in the front and back.
Hmm, of course, Kevin, right? Absolutely. Oh, I forgot. I was gonna ask the chief if they're gonna board it up, but hey, does someone, can somebody ask the chief if they're gonna board these up or what? Like, are they gonna secure them or? I want to know what they're gonna do. Cause they're checking them out tonight, but it's like, well, what, what's the action they're gonna take, you know? Oh yeah, and I have some of his followers already trying to come to my live telling me, oh, you're stalking him. I'm like, excuse me, I live here. Get out of here. No, I'm like, get out of here, get out of here. Okay, so we'll see. I don't know what they're gonna do, but we'll see. Okay, and that's Chappelle. I think it's Jed and his bodyguard. Got some Harvey residents, Amir. So yeah, we're at the, we're, we're um, on one hundred fifty, three hundred block of Myrtle. Aw, and there's my family's old church. So pretty. That's the church, GARDIS, if you didn't see it already. Church is still in pretty good shape, but you know, for months, we had to call and call and call because the, the city owns it and they were letting people break in there and do all sorts of crazy stuff. Okay, I guess they are leaving now. There, some of the cars are headed out. And that's Jed's vehicle. So I don't know what he's up to. Still got one cop car here.
Hey, Carlita. Carlita. What, what's the name of the one talking to me today? Jedidiah. Tell him come in, man. Tell him come in, man.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you, you, you know, that's your truck?
Yes, sir.
It's real nice, brother. You need, you need in a five.
It's the one I said I wanna race with.
I want a shed there. I took it through that lane.
What, you did?
But yeah, I got a bunch of parts. If you ever need it, that's come on here, get it. I go in that, I bring everything back.
Aw, see how nice Harvey, Harvey, you see how nice Harvey residents are, even to Jed. Look at, Mr. Poole comes out and offers to give him parts for his truck. See, we have a lot of great, nice people here. Carlita.
No, I'm in your
No, 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 no. I told the viewers, I said, I said, we have, we have some nice people here, I think. Mr. Poole, even to Jed, he's offering to help them. See how people are so nice? People just wanna help. So many, there are so many good people here.
A fifty-three year resident.
Yeah, so, so you, um, ladies and gentlemen, as you see in, in the center there, the outerly man, that's Mr. Poole. That we, we, a whole bunch of us have been fighting for him to be able to keep his home and Carlita to be able to keep their homes. Unfortunately, they are being forced to sell and to move because of Mayor Clark and the MWRD. It's, it's, it's really, really, really sad and infuriating. So that's why we have to keep fighting, keep paying attention to Harvey, keep liking my videos, um, engaging, commenting. I'll, I'll try to give you guys more action items. As far as, you know, maybe numbers to call to complain or something, you know? I'll work on that. It's just, it's hard because I work in a normal job too, so. But yeah, we, we have, even despite all the tragedy, you see? Mr. Poole's been here since early seventies and he is offering to give Jed parts for his car. You see, that's just, we have a lot of great people in Harvey. And these are the residents that Clark wants to get rid of. Which is so sad. Those lights, so bright.
I ain't never had this much police action ever.
I know, right?
That's what I was gonna say. Tell the truth, Carlita, because I want everybody to hear that.
Yeah, I ain't never had this much, much police action ever.
Yep. Right. And GARDIS says now he's gonna brag that longtime residents want him there. No, no, don't worry, GARDIS. Mr. Poole is showing how generous and kind that many Harvey residents are. Right? It's, it's really more of a reflection on, on him, on um, on Mr. Poole than it is on uh, Jed. So yeah, they're, look at, aw. Now that block still has people on it. Okay, so it's just this block that they picked between the church? And, and Chappelle, maybe, you might have been, you might have been the hero tonight, Chappelle, because you said something and oh my gosh, they actually acted. We were just saying like, the police never do anything. So, good thing you mentioned it.
And I'm not even gonna lie, I can't lie on them. You know, Ben's did come to me after the meeting, when he was outside, and he said, now that you mention it, he said, I will be there. And he came. He showed up and he came. I'm not, you know.
Good. It just shows that public pressure makes a difference.
And, and you know, that's, you know, whether they knew it or not, I don't know. But just, we do know that they have not been patrolling, like they should have. They, you know, so.
Did they say there was anyone in the house?
Well, they, the two, it was two, it was a couple there.
Hmm, okay.
And then the house down there, the big tall one, the big tall white one.
Oh, okay.
It was a family with four kids in there.
How long?
I don't know, but they told, they told Jedidiah that they paid security po, uh, security deposit and rent. They've been paying rent. Now, I asked the lady, she told me she did. I didn't never talk to them, but I seen when they went in there. But the people right there I talked to. And she told, that's the one on my live, she told me that she wasn't paying anybody. So if you're not paying nobody, then I, I, you know, I don't know.
And it's crazy because I was telling the, the people watching that, you know, neighbors here are nosy in a good way. Like, people do watch. They've been calling police, but nothing's, we just haven't gotten any responses. Mandy says that um, when they came because he was put on a special.
There was something that they could do.
Right, it's true. NBC and ABC, yeah, made that help too. So if you guys didn't notice, NBC was filming tonight, ABC was filming tonight, so. Okay, so we have um, Jed, Jed the liar came to Harvey to grift after he got kicked out of Flint. That's what I've been told, you know? But yeah, so I'll try to, you know, first step is just awareness. I thank you guys for tuning in, for showing interest. Um, and then from there, you know, we'll take action as much as we can, so. How did, how, why is her power still on, Ms. Dorothy? That's weird. That, you know, that reminds me of the church. Remember when the power was on for so long, after the city bought it? I mean, that's always my theory is that they want people to break in and just do crazy shit. Well, thank you for speaking up, Chappelle. Hopefully that made a difference. Oh, is Jed, is Jed down there? Oh, okay. I thought it was just Amir. Although, you know, technically with my order of protection, he has to stay away from me. So if I walk down there, he has to go away. You might have to call the cops back. Watch out, watch out. I'm just trying to get this. Hey, uh, can somebody call nine-one-one, tell them to come to one fifty-three hundred block of Myrtle? Gardis, call the cops. See, this is the kind of shit that happens when Jed comes to town. You see why we have the orders? Mandy, call, call the cops, tell them to come. We all want a police report for this. Mandy, tell them to c, call nine-one-one, tell them to come now. I want a police report. I don't care who started what. I want a police report to document this incident. This kind of shit, this is the shit he's pulling near my house. Trying to document that. Did you call the cops? That's call the cops, guys. Mandy, did you call the cops? Did you guys call? Did you call? Yeah? Okay, good.
Told y'all last foot plan.
License plate number. D, don't hit me. Wait, I know.
You okay? Okay? They better not run. I want a police report. I want a police report for this. Right, he, he couldn't just run away. I got as much as I could. Did you get some too?
Yes, I did.
Ah, hey, hey. Jedidiah started a fight.
I'm trying to tell every, don't, don't fuck in the gates, peace God. You know what I'm saying? Y'all, get this online, get your.
You okay? Yeah, I'm trying to document for later.
Yeah, document, please. I'm telling you, okay, I just told him to go get Jedidiah.
Jed, he, he just drove, drove away in his black SUV. He went that way. You guys can find him. He went that way somewhere. Right. Black SUV, I think it's a Texas plate, only one rear plate. Uh, no, there's at least two in the vehicle. I didn't see how many got in, but, but I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure Jed's in that vehicle. What's up? What'd you say?
Jedidiah did this, they got him on video. And I told you guys to go grab him. His car was around the corner.
I, I, I tried to get as much as I could on my live, so it should be on the live.
I think they was trying to jump you from the top. They walked all the way around us. Then they jumped on, then they jumped on, that was stupid. And then you know your friends was wrong. You know your friends was wrong. I did not. I did not. I did not.
Hold on, hold on. I asked for the meds. I didn't even talk to him, but he pushed me. I've already explained this.
You haven't explained nothing.
There we go. Are you recording?
So, okay, good.
Sir, sir, I told you to grab Jedidiah before he left. I got your name and badge number.
We go, we go, you do not want to explain what happened today?
I've already explained. Look, this is what happened. Jed, the, the Harvey Police Officer James allowed Jedidiah to leave the area after he assaulted me and my daughter. Yeah, that's what happened.
Okay.
Don't talk to nobody.
Don't talk, stop talking.
Stop talking.
Yes.
Okay, so the officers, who do we have? We have Manny.
The ambulance is here. I can't grab somebody. Did you hear what he said? I can't grab somebody and get the details later, sir, that's a.
Talk to that sergeant.
Then your ambulance is right there.
Is my face bad?
What's your name?
It don't feel bad. Amir.
Eric on the left hand.
Jedidiah and that light-skinned dude that he was with.
Listen, it's okay, we got the video. I'm not worried about it. My face was real.
I want to document everything, everything.
Document, take that.
Everything.
You got it? Did you get doc, did you get James letting him go?
Uh, I mean, I got him driving away. Ambulance is here.
Don't do it. Jedidiah and the bitch, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Jedidiah and his, uh, proposal.
I can't, I gotta protect my daughter, you know what I'm saying?
Jedidiah Brown and his leader just jumped my boy right here, y'all, and his daughter. That's what's going on.
Clark and Jed are working together, right?
So he said, he said, I wanted to go, I said, dude.
Now, there's still one vehicle there. I don't know whose that is. It looks like this is where it started and I didn't want to get too close, but.
Watching Jedidiah Brown and his crew just jumped my boy right here.
Just keep recording.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'm, I'm recording. What happened? Yeah, because I, it happened so fast.
And then, um, and the big dude, the heavyset dude pushed me and another, and the other dude that was with Jedidiah was trying to swing on me. That's what happened. That's what happened.
Yeah, because it was.
Yeah. Gotcha.
Yeah, I got, you know, I got some of it. I, I wanted to get closer, but I, I didn't want to get too close. I wish I, you know, I just should have gone by instinct and run in because I, I wanted, I wanted to get as much evidence as possible. Because, you know, when people get in a big group, it's hard to see who's doing what. So that's why I'm like, because, you know, I know that's what they're gonna be doing. Now they're gonna go watch the videos and say, "Who threw the first one?" So. Did you see that? Did you get the video? I hope somebody got it. Okay, we got another officer. Don't know who he is. Oh, that's, that's Stringer in Escalade. Okay, thank you. Good to know. Yeah, yeah. It was also very quick. It was also very quick, though. Hey, how are you?
From the school, right?
Yes, 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 yes. Yeah, yeah, I'm still here. But, yeah, and then he, um, Jed just, like, drove off.
Were you watching it when it happened?
Yes, I was.
Let me ask you this question.
Yeah.
You just have him just for no reason, just?
Right, we were just. He was circling around us for no reason. Circling around, he came back, he start hollering, getting on by. It was him, it was the big dude that pushed me and, uh, this, uh, dude wearing a colorful shirt.
Parkles, how they?
Shorts and tall, kinda tall.
Okay, sorry, guys, I gotta just run real quick and get back. Oh, so the Escalade left. I think that was Stringer. I gotta go get the charger really fast. Gotta go get my charger real fast, gosh, otherwise my phone's gonna die. But look, we were just trying, the, you, you know that they do this stuff on purpose, always trying to get views, starting to cause trouble. Right, yeah, and Jed's followers, get out of the chat, trying to say, I mean, actually, no, that's okay, go ahead. Spout your lies. Because better, we can get them on record then. But no, Jed, Jed was the one to start stuff because people, we're just in public, you know? No one was coming for him or his, his crew, his thugs, okay? Sorry, guys, I'm just getting my, I gotta get charged up here before I die. Okay, let me put my thing back down. Whoop. Sorry, tighten that. Now we should get some charge going, man. Well, good thing I was here. And we, we actually got v, uh, video from a few people. Did you see how he was in bad taste, like Beth, you know, he didn't do anything, she didn't do anything? Exactly. You tell them, Trina, Harvey's liable because they're protecting this guy and his thugs. Thank you, exactly, yep. They're just taking orders from the mayor. They have no reason to go after that, right? It proves, it just goes to show that this is all unwarranted.
Do you see how they jumped on him? No, no remorse to do. This is absolutely, you had no, nothing.
Is Amir okay?
This is just, this is just, you know what I'm saying? Felony, making a felony.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna be too nosy. I just wanted to make sure he's okay. He's, you know, you're still in shock because adrenaline's going. Jed couldn't have gotten far.
Did you, you see that? Did you get that?
He drove right, I got it on camera that he drove off in his SUV right after. He knew what he did. And he left right in his SUV, right as you guys were pulling up.
Exactly.
Jed did, do exactly what he was doing.
Me, I'm sergeant.
Harvey should put an APB for him immediately.
To put your hands on a woman? What makes you think it was okay to put your hands on a woman? All because I'm saying, this is my dad, this is my father.
Mm-hmm, they don't let him do it, exactly. Warrant for Jed, right, yep.
Look, and then this fat, big ass fat bitch. Dad, go to the hospital. Go to, you need a hospital. He right here.
I need to file, I need to file charges on Jedidiah.
That's what I'm doing right now.
Okay, are you okay? Because I need you to go see them.
No, I'm cool.
Look.
But dad.
Say that again, Ryan. Because I gotta protect Eric, that's one thing.
No, but dad.
Ernestine Smith says that Jed threatened you last week at the township.
It's all good. We got everything on, did you get the fight on video?
Yes.
Uh, I got some, yes, I got some of it. I got some of it. I just told them that they should put, he just drove off, they should put an APB out for him right now. Go get him. You know, I mean.
I mean, Amir, Amir.
Hey, dad.
No, who's not?
Dad, the sergeant is right here. Dad, the sergeant is right here.
Okay, do I need to talk to James or not, just you?
Just him, dad.
I wanna get your information so we can do your stuff.
Dad, you gotta go to the hospital. You have to go to the hospital. No, like, right now.
I'm going, Airy, just cool out.
Right now.
What I need you to do is look around here. Go check my car and see if my ID is in the car. Here, you go check my car. I want you to go check my car and see if my wallet and my ID is in the car.
Sir, you could just give me your name and say the first.
Please go check and see if they got my wallet in there, like I asked you.
So if you're just tuned in, there was a fight that Jada Dyer appears to have started. When Harvey, uh, uh, cops were arriving, he drove off in his black SUV with the Texas plates. Yeah, we're, we're, I'm live, I'm still live.
Damn, everybody gotta check. It's not in there. Probably have to take, uh, the grass.
Go check the grass, Airy. Hey, let me call you back. Let me call you back.
Yeah, the, the fight was sort of around here, so his ID might be in the grass.
317.
317.
903.
903.
No, he don't read. You can take it, that's your card, though. See if people saw my phone, though.
317, 903.
7700. They probably stole it.
7700?
Yeah.
Right, that's what I was telling them, the, it, site was more that way.
Try, try by the gate over here on the...
Yeah, the ID might be over there.
I look for it, don't worry about it, sir. 141?
Oops, sorry.
32?
Oops, sorry, guys. Yeah, we were looking to see if anything was lost or anything. See, it looks like around this area was where the fight was. Obviously, someone spilled a drink. There's something else there. Uh, and then they kinda tussled and kinda went this away. I don't see anything.
He walked on you. He walked on you, not me. He got a whole video right here. No, I'm fine.
Okay, good.
Tell him he walked up on him.
Uh, I, I think he did, but honestly, I got to go look at the video.
He walked up on you. He walked up on you.
Alright, that'll work.
That's ridiculous. He did walk up there. I was close enough to see it. Here's the one, uh...
I'm sorry, did you still need me at all?
You still need this? You still in my dad's office?
Give me one second. I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Did you wanna, Ramona, did you wanna say, give your witness account? What you saw?
What I saw was of them walking and getting circling, and, and then the first punch was through by Jada Dyer. And then some of the other guys came in, but by that time, I kinda walked away so I could call 911. And then they hit her. I saw that. I'm like, really?
So then they came after you, after, after they hit your dad?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cuz I heard her scream. What's I hit her for? Hit in the top of the head.
Jada Dyer did?
Yeah.
Jada Dyer and his so-called security guard. Listen, listen, this is pre-warning.
Is he the guy with the cap?
They had the blue cap on.
Okay.
Fake-ass security guard. Listen, I do not play. Y'all did that deliberately. This is criminal activity, and you say you're for justice? No, this is not for justice at all. This is very criminal activity. For accounts, I'm telling you, I'm going to every court date. I'm taking your ass to fucking jail. You're going to jail. I'm telling you are. I do not play. And plus, that was uncalled for. Y'all circled around the cars, his people, and everything else for no reason. And you say you're for justice? You stand for people's rights. You stand for nothing. You're nothing. You're nothing. And you're not from Harvey, you're not from Dalton, you were from everywhere else, but you standing justice for Illinois. But damn near, you live in Atlanta and Texas, you gay as fuck, you bitch-ass nigger. I'm not playing.
Yeah, he, he just came to, he came after me at my house on July 4th. Go ahead, did you wanna?
This, this is so criminal. I mean, everybody has a right to say what they wanna say, speak what they wanna say. What I don't like about any of this, we had a right to come over here and watch what's going on without all of this happening. This is so sad that he would do that. Nobody was saying anything to him. Everybody out here was quiet and they were just looking. Now, I, I knew he was up here somewhere, cuz I walked toward my car, and I heard him in the bushes on this side. He was hiding. And he said, "Are you, what are you here for? Are you here to be part of the problem?"
You're saying Jed was hiding in the bushes?
Yes, he was hiding over there.
Oh my god.
This way.
You still recording, too?
He was hiding.
I'm gonna get your information, too, okay, and get the, the live. You got everything on live as well, right?
That way.
Good, good.
And I never said anything to him.
Those bushes?
Yeah, he was over there. In the dark, and you can't see anybody over there.
Right, cuz there, yeah, at the time, there weren't any cars there.
That's where he was hiding, cuz he said something.
And then he came this way, oh, he was approaching Amir coming this way? Okay, so coming this way.
And while everybody's focus was on those guys circling, he was coming up this way.
Oh, walking, okay.
That is why, it was a distraction. Cuz you couldn't see him coming, but I knew he was coming. I saw him. And I started dialing. And before I knew it, he done already got over here and then hit this man and hit his, um, his daughter. And they kicking him. Snatched him to the ground. This was horrible. So I started walking away so I could call 911 and get him some help. We don't need this person here. He needs to be expedited out of Harvey. Period. And this is Amir's fault. It's his fault. You incited this person to come? Why?
He did pull up on the...
Why do we have to deal with violence? Why do we have to have that? When it's senseless, it's like adults cannot talk and disagree. I don't understand. And then it's like, we have a right to be here, too. This is our community. This is not his community. Who gave him the right to come over here and do this? Because he's an evil person. He can say what he wanna say, but this is an evil malicious act. There's nothing nice about this at all. And you incite, you know, God. No, you don't. You do not. Cuz if you knew him, you would not incite violence. And I don't care what he has to say or anybody else. I know how I feel about it. It's wrong. Everybody has a right to their opinion. You don't have a right to incite violence just because you feel a certain way. That is stupidity. And you're an adult doing that. You need to be locked up. You need to go to jail, and you grin and talk your tail like a little sister that you are. That is horrible.
Thank you. Yeah, do you wanna share anything, say anything else?
I do.
You're good? Okay.
I don't really do sort of them of those messages.
And you guys also saw just the document we did see, uh, he went after Beth. I don't think he hit her.
No.
But he went towards...
Yeah, and she got...
Okay.
I walked away so I could dial 911.
Uh, Beth, is the lady, the lady's on the...
It's my call. It's my call that they got.
And I talked to them. They were talking to me on the phone, too.
Oh, okay. But it's, it was my call that actually got the, got the police here. Because everything was in, I was literally on the phone, police.
See if he wants to do anything. Well, I'm so sorry you guys had to go through this in Harvey. It's not, not the impression, not the impression we wanna give. You notice that all the Harvey residents start being nice to you. Jed doesn't live here.
I am a Harvey resident.
Oh, you live here, too?
I was a Harvey resident.
Yeah.
Uh, I live in...
Jed does not live here. Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Cuz see how the people on the block, they're, everybody's so chill.
146, 146 in Union. I'm from there. Yeah, Dr., uh, it's plain.
Oh, you on the other side by the train?
Right.
Who out here has...
I have one. They can go on my live, and this woman has one, too.
Union, display. JoJo and Ryan.
Hold on, Ryan. I wanna do something to live.
Sure, sure. Yeah, no, it's okay.
Okay. Ryan has my number. You could call Ryan.
You saw him on his live.
Yeah, Ryan has my number, but...
Yeah, is Beth okay? Can someone check on Beth? I do, but I don't wanna end the live.
I thought he was gonna jump on her.
That's what I was nervous about, cuz I was trying to cover, but I didn't wanna get too close, cuz I didn't know what was gonna happen. And then, but I saw him, and I was like, oh my god.
He was frustrated. That's why he went after Amir and everybody else, and then he went after, um, Beth.
Did you see it, too?
I recorded as much as I could.
Did you, Diana, did you see, did, do you wanna tell us anything, as far as did you see who, who, uh, threw the first pond, or what, what did you see?
I'm gonna have to look at the, uh, video.
That's what I said, too, cuz it happened so quickly. I honestly can't remember everything.
I'm proud of myself. At Thornton's township meeting, when they was fighting, I was screaming, "They're fighting, they're fighting." This time, I kept, kept my camera this way, but I couldn't really watch.
Exactly, that's how I felt, too, yes. Okay, but thank you. We're glad that you were here, at least covered that. And again, for those, for, for the Jed minions that are in the chat, we are Harvey residents, and we are here peacefully just checking out what's happened, what's happening with these, 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 uh, buildings.
And I'm filing, and I'm filing charges. Or you, your posse, that old woman.
Oh, that was an old woman.
Oh, and then they was going after that white woman.
Oh, Beth. She got, Beth, she got scared and left.
Beth, yeah, Beth wouldn't hurt anybody.
But, I don't know if I'd do it.
Who's Lady C minion? I don't know who that is.
That's minion with a pin.
Yeah. Ryan has the entire fire from the safety distance. I'm glad, I just, but I have to go back and watch you guys, cuz...
Yeah, I gotta go back and watch, too.
Someone else said, "Watching all channels tonight." This is a serious issue.
Thank you for... For some reason, you were muted during the incident, or was I?
Dee Love has, she's live, too, you guys.
They said I was muted during the incident, but they was, I was still filming.
Hey, that's, it's more evidence. That's good. Look at the, look at, look at the Harvey residency. We are very peace, overall, we are a true community, you guys.
This is his sister, Nicole. She wanted me to give it to you. Her name is Nicole.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Can you just text it to me?
Okay.
So usually, if you press on it, it'll, if you option it.
It's like, it's like, yeah. You know what I mean? But my dad, my dad is more of an activist. You know what I'm saying?
Should we get this part? Should we listen to this part?
I know, that's where... Oops. Oh, it's Beth. Oh, Lord, I want an answer, but... Hey, Crook, I'm okay, um, uh, oh, oh, yeah, let me, let me check to see if I got your... Not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to...
Oh, thank you, Quadri. Quadri, I always say your name wrong, I'm sorry.
I need, I wanna make sure that all those, all because, because the death of all those, um, license plates, those young people who jumped on me.
I just, I just don't understand, who's coming down the wrong way? I just didn't understand why the, why Harvey cops didn't just go, it's like, he's right there, just go get him.
Flag him down, say, "Hey, stop that truck."
You know, they're... Cuz I'm sorry.
Sir. Regardless, we already have a signed complaint by her.
She done broke grandma. She broke grandma down. Oh, my fuck. Come on. It's okay. The police said it's okay. Come on.
Yeah, we're safe, guys. I'm just getting footage, just getting coverage for evidence and stuff. Yeah, I wanna, I think I got you pretty good, Amir. I was trying to get you in the light so we could see. I know we had some blood, we had the finger. Uh, did they hit your head as well, Amir? You got your eye swollen?
Just the eye, just this one eye. You see it? Is it going down or is it still swollen?
Uh, no, it's still swollen, yeah.
Okay, you got it?
Mm-hmm, yes. But I want, we should probably, here, can you, can you come under the light here so we can, oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm not picking on you, but I just wanna document it, you know what I mean?
Watch my car. As a matter of fact, photo.
Oh, yeah, you can move. Oh, yeah, this right.
No, you gotta be at the light, okay.
No, that's fine. There's a street light there, too. I just, you know, it's, it's hard in the, with the blue, blue and red lights.
Did y'all get this shit on video? What the fuck? No, that fucking pisses me off, man. Dad, up me up, oh.
Get to the hospital. I'm not, it's just my, this eye is swollen and my finger is dislocated. I'm cool. Here's what we gotta do. We gonna stop this menace. We gonna stop them from menacing people. This ain't slowing me down. As a matter of fact, this is gonna help us in every way.
Do you know what instigated the bite, Amir? What happened?
Hold on, what you say?
I just wanted to know, what, what instigated it? What, what hap, what happened? Cuz it all happened so quickly.
They said, "I'm sick of you."
Well, we got it on video.
Okay.
Okay, so, we got it on video.
Cuz you guys, one minute, one second, you guys were just there in the street, and then the next, I saw them all around you.
They walked back in the bush and hid in the bushes, and then came back, and then, and then they started arguing with my daughter to initiate a fight.
But look, I told, no, no, I told...
Did you have any other injuries, Amir, or was it just that?
Because that, that old lady had, had, was one of the ones that jumped on me. So... Yes.
Do you have any, any other injuries, or is it just the hand and the face?
Just the hand and the eye.
Hand and the eye, okay.
This, this is down now, it's just one piece right here.
Now, you're bleeding from your nose, it looks like. Is that where the blood's coming from?
I guess.
Okay.
It's not, like I said, it's just pretty much the eye. The bleeding is just where.
Right, cuz you, and you still have the adrenaline pumping through your system, so that, that helps, hopefully it'll help with the pain. So he's okay, everybody. Amir's okay.
Hey, you got, make sure you blast this out everywhere.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay.
I'm gonna send it to the FBI.
No, listen.
Come on, dad. Let's go.
Yeah. Do you guys need any, do you need anything? Are you okay?
I'm cool. You can't even move. You can take it back. I can drive.
I'm right here. I don't have my car.
Where's Joe?
He's right, um...
Get Pusel.
I don't even know.
Where is Pusel?
Sure, sure, sure.
Pusel. Come on.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Are you, um, well, I was gonna say, or you know, I can give you mine. Can you text me, just since I'm still on live? But my number's not seen, it's fine. Okay, whenever you're ready. Okay, it's three. Yeah, number Ryan. Okay. Because I asked Ramona to, uh, text me your number. But that's okay, that'll be better. And text me, text me, too. It'll be, it'll be, well, this was a live when I end, oh, that's you, okay. When I end it, it will be, um...
Watch out, get out the way, you better get out the way.
There he is.
Get him, get him, y'all.
Grab him. My phone died. My phone died.
I got it. No, we're still live.
Get this on live, where you at?
Yeah, I'm right here, I'm live.
This guy, too. I want them all.
All of them. Call your backup. He like going to jail. But this is. Come on out, everybody.
Call the police right now.
And he dropping a handicap. What handicap car you driving? No, your ass too.
Him too.
Your ass too.
Him too. Him too. Hey, come here. Hey, Ryan, Ryan.
Yeah, get there.
This shit right here. Get this nigga man arrested. All them.
Get your fat ass. You fat bitch.
All them.
You're a fat ass too. Do I need to call on nine-one-one search, search? Uh, Dad.
Him too.
Dad, what are you doing?
No, no, no.
Everything is reported over here.
Him too. No, no.
Hey, eh, where you going?
He can't, she leaving the scene.
You cannot leave the scene.
They leaving the scene. Get it, get it, Ryan. You got it? Yes, you got it.
I got them leaving. They're leaving the scene of the crime again.
Go over there before they arrest your ass.
No, listen. Stop calling in, Eric.
Okay, but I don't want you to go into jail neither.
I'm good, I'm good.
Crook, you can stop by if you want.
Eric, calm down.
Harvey's sending more people. Hopefully they're gonna get him. Ooh, your daughter's a fighter. Look at her go.
Hey, yo, this is good. I'm so glad this happened.
I know.
Do you know what I'm saying?
I just hope you're okay.
Ah, I'm good, I'm good. I look, probably, like I got the guns on there.
Oh, let's go, let's go. Let's get it. Because we're, we're far enough away. We'll be up. All right, Harvey police are stopping Jedidiah's crew. We're trying to flee the scene of the, of the crime.
I think we should go a little further. Maybe to that end of it.
Sure. I mean, they got it under control. They got a lot of cops coming, so we'll be safe. Sorry, guys. I'm just trying to, to get a little closer.
They messed up when they tried to pull off.
Ryan, don't fight him. Hey, stop, stop. Don't fight him. Don't fight him. Roll him to the. Hey, Ryan. Fight, don't fight him. Don't fight him. Don't fight him.
Who's that? Who is that? Get that plate. Get that plate, Diana. Get that plate. Can you get the plate? They shouldn't be driving off either.
Oh, no. Oh, what? Oh, what? All right.
How you know that? I'll tell you.
Fire. Fire two. Fire two.
I thought you want my legs off.
Hey. All she want to do is. Where's Beth?
I'm gonna take this.
Okay, do it. Keep doing it. You're doing all that for what?
I don't want you to get me.
Keep doing it.
Don't worry about it.
Hey, step back. Step back.
He's squeezing my hand. I'm telling him in my hand, he's broke.
If I'm telling you my shit is broke, it's broke. What the fuck is wrong with you? Y'all fucker, you gonna bring my shit back.
There's Jedidiah right there. More Harvey police on the scene. Okay, so I believe Jedidiah is in a vehicle.
Right now. Go right now, Ryan. Come on. Go right now. Mary.
Just don't ask that in front of him.
You changed up. Yeah, I told you. Don't talk to that motherfucker. Of course he is. Ah, shut the hell up.
Oh, hey, 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 you see?
That's why your hair broke. It's evident. Evidence.
Yeah, yeah. They got, they got, they got body cam. They got body cam. So you see me coming in this.
Yeah, my, that's why.
I need to go and move out. I'm not going to tag it. I don't tag it anymore. I need y'all to move back and stop attacking.
We got to move.
All this calling back and forth. We got them in custody.
Off the sidewalk, y'all. Get off the sidewalk. Get off the sidewalk. Get off the sidewalk. Off the sidewalk. Oh, my bad.
They're coming in this.
Right, I'm, I'm not saying anything. I'm just getting it on film. That's the best thing we can do right now is document it. So we are at, we're at Myrtle and one hundred and fifty-fourth street in Harvey.
That was the one other security.
And we're at one hundred and fifty-fourth and Myrtle in downtown Harvey. Uh, it appears there was a fight. It appears that Jedidiah and his group instigated it. Kevin Smith, why would they run again? Um, I do not know. I do not know. It definitely doesn't look good. They tried to flee. Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm.
I, I look way back.
Thank you, Crook. Yes, we're good. We are all, we're all safe. We are all safe. They are arresting, um, I think there was a lady who was attempting to flee the scene. She's being taken into custody right now. There was a gentleman in the back.
Ramona. Ramona. What, I'm classing out Ramona. Man, my Beth is bad.
Holy City J-Ball, get the fuck off my live if you're not gonna be respectful.
It's going down, right? No, hey, that's what you get. Get that, and just look at.
And he said, he said, kill him.
Good. Let it be broke.
And she pissed up. She said, I, this one, my baby, good.
Good, that's good. Don't matter. It's on my video.
So Amir's the one that got injured.
Yeah, nobody get, nobody didn't get killed.
I was gonna say, you know what? It ended peacefully. It could have been much worse.
And my eye is going down. My finger might hurt tomorrow.
I'm still, I'm still sad that that happened to you. But.
I was trying to protect my.
Show me your finger.
See it? They gotta, they gotta put it back. It's gonna hurt tomorrow.
So that dude, the fat dark skin one with the, with the burgundy, he was in it too, right?
Uh, I don't think so. It's on video.
He said his mama jumped in.
Well, that's fine. We're pressed charge. We got video. You got it on video?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll review your video.
Yeah, I gotta sue my phone charges up.
Good. So we have at least, should have at least two videos.
We got probably more because we got, we got D love, right? We got your video, right?
Yep.
So we got three videos. You, you on live, right? You been on live all this time? Good. My nose still bleeding, Ryan.
Let's see. I just tell, you know, I cannot tell because all I see is the white and the red, or the blue and the red flashing.
No, no, listen. I'm asking him.
I mean, it doesn't look as bad as before, but it's still swollen. Are you gonna go to get checked out, right? Oh, yeah, I have him take care of that.
Let's go.
Hey.
That was stupid.
Beth, are you okay? I'm so sorry, Beth. I've been live. That's why I didn't say anything. Oh, what? The whole thing? Stupid butt. Maybe it's a good thing in that, I think if they didn't, they probably would have been in more trouble. Because they started all that shit and then they ran off and the police came. That looked really bad.
You can't step up. I'm glad they didn't touch you because remember they started to come towards you too?
They were gonna hurt me.
They were. I saw them.
They were going to.
The cameraman sucks. Eyes open. Get the fuck out of here. At least I'm covering this. Where's your ass?
Uh, Beth, talk to Ryan's camera. Tell him what, what happened here.
Oh, yes, Beth. People are asking about you, hoping that you're okay.
I, I was able to safely drive away. I had the instinct to drive away. I ran through my car. Then I drove around. I felt very upset. I didn't know what to do. I tried to call you, Ryan, and you didn't answer your phone because you're shooting live. And I'm very upset. And what I saw was that Jedidiah Brown approached Amir Shakar. He walked long around the block. He didn't just come up to him to avoid him. He made a long walk around and he verbally, made a verbal altercation with Amir Shakar. And then he beat him up and he was beating him. He wasn't just having a fistfight. Jedidiah Brown was beating Amir Shakar. And he needs to be arrested and he needs to face whatever the judges decide. But he wasn't just, it wasn't just a fistfight. He was beating Amir Shakar to the, to the level where everyone was concerned that he might kill him.
No, he wasn't beating me like that. Don't say that.
But Bethy, I was worried because I saw you from a distance where he was starting to come after you.
He might kill him.
She was standing next to me.
Yeah, did. Yeah, but Jed came after you. I was worried he was gonna go, like physically come after you, Beth.
So what now?
Wasn't that it?
Huh?
Wasn't that tough?
I'm glad it could have been worse.
Beth. Beth.
You need to follow charge too.
No, we gotta call.
Oh, oh yeah, yeah, we did. I'm so glad this happened. Are you still live?
Yeah, I'm still live guys. You got 190 viewers right now, live. They're all watching your face.
Oh, call the news, once again Jedidiah strikes again, fighting.
We, we got a lot of Jed, uh, um, Jed, what do you call him, you know, his little minions in here too, they're saying shit, but it's fine. Is that for us? Oh, that's right, whatever happened to the car that drove off?
It's witnesses, it's witnesses all over too, we got about five witnesses.
Uh, Jed has been arrested.
Jed and his people have been arrested.
And the female and the male. I don't know who they are. You can see one of them right there. Okay, Jed is, I believe in custody in this vehicle. The other gentleman is in custody in that vehicle.
Who is this? Just a bystander? Just a bystander? I don't know.
Right, you never know.
What's that woman's name again, Sheila what? Sheila Ash.
Yeah, AKJ, why didn't you ask why the mayor of Harvey has been protecting Jed and his gang of bullies? They've been protecting him as he's been harassing me and others uh, in Harvey the last few weeks, so... If you have questions about that, I suggest you address Mayor Clark, this is all his fault. What happened to the black SUV?
It's right there, it's just, another one just pulled up.
I thought it was a taller SUV, that's the one that, you know, that went that way?
Oh! Was there anybody else that got hurt? Was there anybody else that got hurt? Was there anybody else that hurt you all?
Amir!
Can they get the, where can they, when would they report you that? Oh, it's 24 hours. Did you get a report number? Yeah, I got it. Amir, did you get a report number? Did you get a report number? For you, you need to report, I see, I bet you did one. Did you get a report number?
Did he get it on?
Hmm, right, right Brian, exactly. Yep. This is crazy.
They said he did. Yeah, I'm not sure, because I'm trying to protect her, I just know with Jed and... I didn't see him touching, I didn't see him touching. I think he's still back, but I didn't see, but I have to, we have to have video, probably, so. I'm gonna want you or anybody else, or Beth, that's what I'm gonna ask.
I was worried though, because he started, he was lunging towards Beth.
He did.
That's alright Jeff, uh, Jed's minions, you just keep, you just keep saying a whole bunch of BS and uh, we'll, we'll put it with the evidence.
They don't say I can come over, I'm not coming. He talking to you.
So if you're just tuning in, uh, yeah AKJ, watch more of my videos, yeah. Christine, you like me, please be fair, I am more than fair, go watch my other videos if you wanna know the history. And that's one of, that's one of Jed's guys, don't, don't entertain him. Yeah, don't even entertain him. Natalie, get the fuck out of here. Oh, mind you, I, I live here and I cover uh, happenings all the time. Jed does not live here. And uh, right, all Jed's cult members are in my live, oh my god, that's okay, we'll use it as evidence. This is great. Holy City J-Ball, okay, good, I'll have to look, I'll have to look into um... To look into you two threatening me. I'll screenshot all your threats, so.
Grab that sergeant and tell him, tell her, we want a press charge against her too. Okay, so, why is she coming with us?
Okay, so the one lady is-
Okay, you said we gotta get this Sheila girl.
The one lady that was with Jed, that was driving the vehicle that Jed was in, is still standing there, Jed is in one of the SUVs, he's been in, put in cuffs. And then the other bigger, I think it was like the bodyguard guy is in, in the other vehicle, so that's what happened. Uh, Amir got injured, but he's okay. Right Tommy G, exactly. I don't know if that's a real- You know what it is, it's a lot of, um, I'm not saying everybody, but it's a lot of- I mean, there are some good ones, but there's-
What is Beth going over there for?
Oh wait, okay, nevermind, sorry. Yeah, it's hard to be, she shouldn't be going over by, Sheila, Sheila's very aggressive.
We don't want, we don't want, she'll shoot her and say herself that this, no. No, we gotta be smart. I'm glad that they didn't fucking jump her, cause they started to.
I was so worried, like, and I was too far away, I was like...
Ryan, you couldn't do anything, cause if you were there, he would have called a truck.
Oh yeah, you definitely would have got it.
So don't worry about it. It's good that it happened, when it happened, so we'll make the best of it, look, I'm good. This is gonna hurt in the morning, and that's it.
That's Alderwoman parked over there. I'm 150, wait, I'm, I'm 150 seconds, oh, come here, come here.
Okay. Cause I wanna see, okay, so that, I don't know where the other vehicle is. We wanna see who this is, here.
I know she didn't jump on me.
Got a whole bunch of, look at that, one, two, three, four, five cars that way. This is kinda quiet in here, and... Let's see who's here. Oh, it's Alderwoman Smith for sure, where is she going?
She's going, leaving now, cause if we didn't say or do anything and we watch her approach.
Oh, oh, and she's not lea- well, yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, so we have an Alderwoman with the city of Harvey here. What do you need confirmation on Crook? Just message it again, I didn't see what the question was, but, so we have an Alderwoman with the city of Harvey that is here creeping on the scene, but not anywhere. And I remember Clark has, has had the police protecting Jed and his crew for the past few weeks, as he and his gang have been harassing me and others in Harvey. So Talani is with cred, uh, with Clark's crew. Sorry guys, I know it's like a little wobbly. I believe she was the lady who was driving, right, but I just don't, I don't know who these, a lot of these folks are.
Oh, oh, here you go Auntie.
Oh, that's okay Crook, don't block anybody, cause we'll save the comments as evidence. In the chat, I don't even see. Oh, okay, yeah, Crook, if you wanna stop by, come stop by, we're on 154th right now. Can't miss us, just come down, come, you gotta come from the, well, either way, the east or the west. Uh, no, this is just a, uh, another YouTuber, is that, yes, we're in the second ward, correct? Yep. Thank you Kevin, thank you. Oh, requests, okay, I don't know what their requests are Crook, but yeah, I just figured the comments from the crazy Jed followers, we'll just save them as evidence. So don't erase those. Oh, I think, well, this is like an old sign.
Sheila Ashley was in, she might have ducked down in that vehicle.
Oh, the one that's parked there? Could be. We could go, we could go walk by, but I think-
Yeah, well, let's, let's see if we could find out if they're really in that.
I agree, oh Crook, okay, good, good, do you guys wanna, I'm gonna, we're gonna see if there's anybody in that car there that's sitting there. And then I wanna walk over and, and see what Talani's doing, let's ask her a question. Yeah, we're just trying to, to... Beth and I are just checking out to see who else is around here. Cause I, I didn't, I thought this car came up before, right? Was this car here before? Who, who are you? Okay, you're in public actually, so, yes.
Hey, she picked me up, you bitch! She hit me, she hit me, cops arrest her! She assaulted me, look what she did to my camera! She assaulted me! Arrest her!